Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Can you all hear me? Welcome, welcome. Welcome to the April 8th meeting of the Evanston Township High School Board of Education. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here, thank you. All right, well, it's good to see the full house. So our first item on the agenda is the written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is comments from the public.
We do have public comment this evening. I'm going to introduce the comments to the public and then I will call folks. So speakers who have signed up for public comment will be invited in the order that they signed up to address the board for up to three minutes. I will keep time and signal you at the end of two minutes as a courtesy and I'll let you know time is up at the three-minute mark in the event that becomes necessary. Speakers are asked to come forward and speak to the lectern. Please state your name and address. Public comments generally pertain to school district matters, but comments about any individuals are expressly prohibited. Please understand that the school board does not respond to public comments, but will listen carefully and will follow up as the board deems appropriate. Our first public comment this evening is Siobhan Moffett.
Good evening. My name is Siobhan Moffett. I live at 2027 Church Street here in Evanston. I am here representing more than 500 parents of ETHS students who have signed a petition, and I'm going to read that petition to you now. Dear District 202, District Leaders and School Board, We are a collective of concerned parents who are worried by the actions of other parents in our community. We understand that this is a particularly difficult time for those in our community who have family and ethno-religious connections to the mass killing and destruction in Israel and in Gaza and to the Israeli hostages. We are also very cognizant of how racialized patterns in the U.S. are impacting the way things are playing out as a community. Both in District 202 and in District 65, white parents have been weaponizing their Jewish identity to attempt to speak on behalf of all Jews and silence any staff member who expresses support for Palestinian people in any way. Teachers are being reported to school leaders and accused of improper behavior for wearing anything pro-Palestinian, having flags in their classrooms, inviting anti-Zionist Jewish or Palestinian groups to participate in civic engagement activities, speaking out in public on the issue, and for the mere mention of Palestine in their classrooms. These parents are also working to silence and remove Jewish educators, further proving that this is not a religious issue but a political one. The same parents who are making these complaints against teachers now were also the ones who demanded that the school board do more to educate teachers, supposedly so that they could have discussions with students about the violence in Israel and Gaza. As time goes on, the death toll of Palestinians surpasses, at the time of the writing of this, it was 31,000, it is now over 33,000. Discussions of the plight of Palestinians have become unavoidable. Thus, teachers and students alike are engaging in conversation. This about-turn and relentless attempts at silencing any concern for civilians in Palestine make it clear that they were demanding discussions that only supported Israel unequivocally. These parents are not just complaining, but calling for the dismissal of our educators. This is unacceptable behavior by our community members.
One minute.
Evanston's school districts have faced past backlash because they teach a systemic understanding of racial and LGBTQ oppression. Our school districts have stood firm in the face of that criticism, never wavering and never giving in to bigoted threats even in court. We appreciate the critical and anti-oppressive lens that our districts have added to the teaching pedagogy in recent years and are proud of our school's commitment to equity and to open discussions of oppression. Today, teachers wear LGBTQ-friendly T-shirts and Black Lives Matter T-shirts to school, and no one is shouting for them to be fired, even as there are households who hold religious beliefs that are counter to some of these issues. The mere gall of demanding that a teacher be removed because one doesn't agree with their political stand on a global issue is rooted in white privilege and a white supremacist notion that one can simply rid the environment of anything that displeases them. Palestinian people face oppression that mirrors the plight of many marginalized groups in the U.S., and the historical and political context of their oppression is just as valid a discussion point as it is when we discuss Native, Black, and LGBTQ issues. We all have become aware that many pro-Palestinian individuals across the country have been losing their jobs in retaliation for any sign of support for Palestine. This is a grave injustice that has already occurred in our very city and is more often than not targeted at community members of color. We ask that Districts 202 and 65 remain strong in their commitment to their equity values, which not only means equal treatment for all staff and students, but also requires that the districts look at the larger systemic dynamics at play and protect staff and students from patterns of harm that we are seeing in our schools and the wider community. We are asking that you, our school leaders, continue to keep your teaching staff and all employees safe from attacks and send a message that harassing staff members who work tirelessly for our community will not be tolerated. We thank you and continue to support the district's commitment to standing against oppression of all types and your commitment to a liberatory education. Concerned parents of District 202.
Next is Brittany Tipora.
I'm Brittany Tipora. My address is 1739 Dodge Avenue here in Evanston. I'm an ETHS parent, and today I wanted to talk about something that I'm intimately familiar with, and that is white women's tears and the weaponization of our perceived innocence and good intentions as a means to uphold oppressive systems. This is a concept that in Evanston we are very familiar with, and I would like to applaud the board and administrators for being able to skillfully identify this form of racialized and oppressive violence when they have been faced with it from groups like FAIR and by individuals who seek to dismantle equity initiatives. The attacks made against our pro-Palestinian and pro-liberation teachers by Zionists who seek to undermine our teachers' right to affirm that the lives of Palestinians have worth, value, and are deserving of full liberation reek of that same oppressive violence that is cloaked in tears and "good intentions" but only result in further marginalization. I would like to again thank you all for your ability to so far navigate that immense pressure from Zionists, and I ask that you continue to support our teachers' right to liberatory beliefs and teachings. Thank you.
Next is Carla Thomas.
Hello, good evening. My name is Carla Thomas. I'm a resident of Evanston with two children here, and one of whom is going to be entering ETHS in just over a year. I am also the co-chair of the Education Committee of the NU Chapter of Education for Justice in Palestine. As a researcher, my specific focus is parent and community reactions to education policies and parents' attempts to influence and change education policies. With this as a focus, obviously since 2020, my research has centered on parents who are pushing for anti-CRT, pushing an anti-CRT agenda, and those who are reacting to attempts to shut down education around Black existence, any acknowledgement of Black struggle, Black oppression, as well as Black history. So it is not lost on me that when I see a stunning parallel to these white supremacist behaviors occurring in our town and in many educational institutions across the country. As parents within our community attempt to silence any discourse on Palestine within our schools and render invisible Palestinian existence, Palestinian struggles, Palestinian oppression, and Palestinian history. As a Black queer human, it is easy for me to see my struggle and my oppression mirrored in the struggle of others, and I understand that all oppression is connected. If the world can turn a blind eye to Palestinian oppression, they can do the same to mine. So I am here to ask that as District 202 has stood firm in the face of much pushback around topics of Black Lives Matter and LGBTQ issues being discussed as part of the liberatory education we claim to champion, I expect and applaud that the district attempts to allow for free and open examination of current affairs and the oppression of any group of people. We as a community believe in teaching our children to be upstanders, to be champions for justice, so how could we possibly tell them not only to turn a blind eye to the suffering and misery of Palestinian people, but worse, not to utter a word as it transpires daily across our smart devices? I ask that the district stands strong in their support for teachers and students who feel moved, as any sentient being ought to at this moment, to speak or to act in solidarity with the Palestinian people. Our collective humanity should mandate that we speak out and not stand in silence.
Heather Sweeney.
Hello, my name is Heather Sweeney. I'm a parent of an ETHS student and an ETHS grad. I wanted to thank you for your commitment to the staff and students who are showing up against the genocide in Palestine, and I say this as a descendant of Holocaust survivors and with family in Israel. I also wanted to say that I'll be tuning into the conversation later about the discipline report. The ETHS racial disparities and discipline were jarring, as I'm sure they were for all of you, and I'll be curious to hear your plans to address this, including how to ensure ETHS is truly inclusive. Thank you.
Kristin White.
Good evening. My name is Kristin White. I live at 1611 Fallon Court, and my daughter will be starting to attend ETHS in August. As a family, we are excited for this transition. As a parent, one characteristic I appreciate about ETHS is that it models to students what it looks like to examine power and how power enables those who hold it to distribute benefits and risks to certain groups of people. I'm excited for my daughter to be in classes with teachers who invite her to think critically about power, who has it, what is it, and how does it impact groups of people. I want my daughter to enter adulthood being able to make sense of the world around her and analyze how power is distributed. Please continue to protect the rights of teachers to bring these critical discussions and frameworks to the classroom. We often, as parents, support these conversations until we find we are a member of a more powerful group, privileged group, and our kids begin asking us questions we cannot comfortably answer. We cannot ask teachers to prepare our youth to think critically about history and power unless it implicates us as parents. Please stand resolute in allowing teachers to help our students examine what is happening in Israel and Palestine from a critical, balanced perspective that encourages the full and equal humanization of all parties to this conflict.
Robin Brown.
Hello, my name is Robin Brown. I live at 1205 Elmwood. I'm an ETHS parent and will be for the next six years. I'm speaking for myself and for my husband who cannot be here. This is our first year as ETHS parents and thus our first experience seeing leadership in action. We've been impressed and are grateful to be part of this community. I'm not here to tell you anything new tonight. You are the experts in educational policy and best practices for supporting young people as they develop a lifelong passion for learning. I am only here to express support and appreciation while encouraging you to stay the course. As you all know, supporting a lifelong passion for learning requires openness to a diversity of thoughts and perspectives. I have been concerned about the requests, demands, and threats sent in your direction by some who are confusing openness to different perspectives with a lack of student safety. I have heard calls for teachers to be disciplined and students to be silenced. Unfortunately, these calls for censorship are the same tactics that we've seen in schools across the nation from Texas to Florida in backlash to important diversity, equity, and inclusion work. ETHS has long taken pride in being at the forefront of DEI work. A hallmark of any DEI initiative is the understanding that there will be disagreement and strong feelings in the process. Participants are always reminded that feeling uncomfortable is not a reason to shut down, but rather a sign that something is shifting and learning is taking place. Discomfort is a sign of growth rather than danger. We all know that there has been profound discomfort in our local, national, and global community over the past several months. The events of October 7th and the subsequent violence and destruction of Gaza have touched everyone, some more personally than others. We have been impressed with ETHS's commitment to allowing healthy discourse and conversation. You have been thoughtful about providing student spaces for dialogue and processing to the extent that the students desire to do so. You have heard from many parents and outside voices, and you have listened. We encourage you to remain steadfast in your commitment to doing what you know how to do, providing a liberatory education which encourages teachers to discuss world events with a systemic perspective while acknowledging power dynamics and systems of oppression. Thank you for holding these values in the face of demands to censor, silence, and suppress.
That concludes public comment for this evening.
Thank you, thank you. And I want to just say to everyone who spoke that the board really acknowledges our community and that we appreciate the fact that you've taken time to come to this meeting and share your thoughts. We recognize that for some of you, this might be stepping out of your comfort zone to a degree. So really, for many people, we know that this could be just a source of anxiety, so we want to acknowledge that as well. Thank you for the time that you've taken to share with the board. I know that we don't respond, but we certainly listen, so thank you again. All right, so the next item on our agenda is items for information. Right, M.I.S. So the first item is introduction of tenured teachers.
All right. Madam President and Board, I am delighted to introduce Dr. Scott Bramley, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, who will then bring up all of our department chairs and maybe a couple of directors to introduce our teachers who are receiving tenure tonight. It is no small matter to receive tenure here at Evanston Township High School, so why don't we just congratulate all of our teachers tonight who are receiving? Give them a round of applause. Many, many, many of them, many of you were hired during the pandemic and just faced insurmountable challenges in the classroom, both online, remotely, when returning. It's just been a very difficult time, but here we are, receiving tenure. So we're going to turn this over to Dr. Bramley, who will bring up the supervisors by department, and then teachers who are receiving tenure tonight. You're going to come up as your direct supervisor or someone. I think Pete's going to be reading for, maybe reading for English tonight. And after all of you are introduced, you will all come around together to either fist bump or shake hands and receive a wonderful pen from our board president congratulating you on receiving tenure tonight. So, Dr. Bramley, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. This is my favorite meeting of the year. I only attend on two occasions.
If you would like to attend more, you can certainly come to my board.
And they're not day and night. They're this meeting and they're October, for anyone who understands that reference. So I appreciate everyone being here this evening. This is an extremely positive event for us, and I just love the positive energy in the room tonight to honor our dedicated educators. Every initial new hire orientation in the fall, I make a comment. Dr. Campbell and I typically share the same sentiment to say, you were hired for a reason, right? And we wanted you to do the work that you were hired to do, and you have all done that exceedingly well, and we are so proud of you. So that's my congratulations to all of you. Now I get to say very technical things, one of which is when you come up to the podium, please do come up with your immediate supervisor or your director so that you can be honored. They have a few words to say about you. And then, would you want to hold everyone to the end? Do you want to do it by department? Okay, so then after your department director has read for the entire department, you will come through the center here, you'll make your way around, we'll fist bump you, you get your pen like Dr. Campbell said, and then you can leave. You're welcome to stick around, but you can also leave if you would like to as well. Okay? Our first department is Academic Supports, so I'll ask Mr. Jerry Success to come up with his teachers and staff members, and then next up will be Arts Plus Innovation, if you want to ready yourself.
Thank you for the nice applause, but they're the ones getting tenured. Wait, that wasn't for me? So thank you. Hello, board, Dr. Campbell and everybody, thank you. So I'm here to introduce two great people from the Academic Supports Department. I'll start with Ms. Liz Bramley. Liz is our building-wide reading specialist, and Liz, just a little statement from you, your dedication and expertise in fostering literacy skills are truly commendable. Oh, there you are. All right, thank you. Here's to many more years making positive impact on students' lives through the power of reading. Well done and congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce and say a little sum by Ms. Philinda Coleman. Ms. Coleman, congratulations on achieving tenure as a reading interventionist. Your commitment to helping students improve their reading skills is inspiring. Here's to continued success in making a difference in the lives of young readers. Well done and best wishes for the future. Congratulations. Skip to the loo, my darling, whatever it is.
Next up, Nick Gell from Arts and Innovation.
Good evening, board. That's how we roll in Arts and Innovation. Thank you for having us here tonight. The first teacher I would like to introduce to you this evening is Mr. Chris Johnson. Chris joined the visual arts team three years ago and has established himself as one of the most versatile art teachers I've ever worked with. In only a few years, Chris has taught drawing, painting, cartooning, graphic design, video production, and video production. While you might think this is about him being the new guy, this is a reflection of Chris's talents, knowledge, and expertise. He understands when it comes to art, the materials don't matter, and it's all about making students think. And when working with young people, Chris is a master at making them think. If you're lucky enough to be in his classroom, you might observe how Chris can re-engage students with their artwork and even the most reluctant of learners. Let's say a student is ready to be done with their art project and doesn't want to do anything else. Chris has this unique ability to use his calm demeanor to approach the student and start a discussion about their work. By the time he walks away, Chris will have gotten the student to let their guard down, try something new that could take twice as long, and Chris will have walked away, leaving the student feeling like it was their idea. He's truly a Jedi master and a skill in this area. I'm excited to continue working with Chris as I know our students and department benefit from his presence. He's thoughtful, caring, and committed, and I'm excited for his journey to continue at ETHS. Congratulations to Chris on earning tenure this evening. The next teacher I would like to introduce to you this evening is Ms. Pamela Pagau. Pam is one of our visual arts teachers and has made an incredible impact on our program, specifically in ceramics and sculpture. I can still remember when we interviewed Pam and she shared the story of driving around Chicago looking for old donated toys that her students could use for sculptures. That work ethic and care for her students has continued at ETHS and for our Wild Kits. Just today, Pam and her colleagues spent all day outside with a Raku ceramic firing, a process that involves fire, sawdust, and a lot of smoke. Her willingness to put in the extra work so her students can have a unique learning opportunity is always on display and is at the core of who she is as a person. Pam has proven to be an incredible human being who cares for all students. She seeks out additional resources our students sometimes need to ensure that they're being cared for here at ETHS. She's a helper in our department and always willing to lend a hand to her colleagues for events like our empty bowls, as well as some of our student exhibits. I'm excited to continue working with Pamela as she continues to help us refine our curriculum, facilities, and the student experience, all for the better. Congratulations, Pamela. And the last teacher I'd like to introduce to you this evening is Ms. Sarah Zagree. Like many music teachers, Sarah wears several hats. She's a music teacher for our piano and music tech courses, she's our choir director, vocal director for The Musical, Matilda opens in a few weeks, please get your tickets, pit director for Yamo, and runs multiple extracurricular vocal ensembles after school. She's incredibly busy. Sarah came in at a difficult time as we came out of the pandemic, and music programs returned to the rehearsal room after a lot of time away. I couldn't think of anyone better than Sarah to support our students' well-being during this difficult time. She was and continues to be a caring teacher for all of her students. She sees them as people first and performers second. She spends extra time listening and dialoguing with students to hear their perspectives on how the choir program is running and where they would like it to go. Sarah's commitment to music for her students has been demonstrated through her willingness to give them every available opportunity to perform. She's created moments for students to sing at pep rallies, sporting events, tree lightings, in the lobby, in the community, and on tour to St. Louis and New Orleans. Sarah is incredibly creative in creating opportunities for students, passionate about all aspects of music education, and supportive for all of her students. Congratulations to Sarah on receiving this honor.
All right, next up we have Dr. Beavis, who is representing Ms. Jones for the English Department. So if you're from the English Department, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and lining up along the windows with Dr. Beavis.
All right, well, Simone Jones sends her congratulations. I get the honor to read Simone's words tonight to our newest tenured teachers in the English Department, and I'm going to do it in alphabetical order. Catherine Buck. There we go, alphabetical. All right. It is with great honor and pride that I stand before you to recognize Ms. Catherine Buck this evening. Ms. Buck joined ETHS as a new teacher fresh out of college, having completed her student teaching at a middle school in Indiana. During the interview process, she received another job offer at a middle school. Despite my advice to consider the alternative offer, given the uncertainties of where we were in the hiring process and the challenges of starting here at ETHS, Ms. Buck remained resolute in her desire to be part of our community. She boldly declared, "I really want to be at ETHS." Despite the absence of guarantees, Catherine bet on herself, and her decision has proven to be a wise one. From the outset of her teaching career here, Ms. Buck demonstrated a remarkable ability to dive right into her work. She dedicated herself to honing her craft, navigating the delicate balance between setting high expectations and genuinely caring for every student's well-being. This equilibrium is challenging even for seasoned educators, yet Ms. Catherine Buck embraced the task with determination. She sought out resources, welcomed feedback, and persevered through challenges, pursuing her master's degree in reading and literacy and taking on the significant role of writer's showcase sponsor. She exemplified the power and commitment and resilience. Three years into teaching, I had the pleasure of observing Ms. Buck's class this fall, and I couldn't help but feel a swell of pride. Her unwavering determination- Her unwavering determination and clear sense of purpose were palpable. Ms. Buck's journey serves as a testament to the importance of knowing one's goals, working tirelessly to achieve them. She continues to inspire students to pursue their dreams with the same dedication she exemplifies. Catherine, I am grateful for the lessons you have taught me, and I extend my heartfelt congratulations on achieving tenure. Your dedication and commitment are an inspiration to us all. Thank you. All right, I have Al Delato. I am honored to take this moment to recognize Ms. Al Delato. Ms. Delato often expresses her aspirations to be an educator she wished she had during her high school years. While I cannot speak to her own high school experiences, I can confidently affirm that she exceeds the expectations of a traditional classroom teacher in her commitment to her students. She has cultivated an environment where students feel valued simply by her presence. They willingly engage in her lessons, knowing they are respected and affirmed. Each day, Ms. Delato challenges her students to think critically about their role in the world. She invests considerable effort imposing thought-provoking questions, encouraging students to push beyond their comfort zones, seamlessly integrating academic content with social justice principles. She inspires students to confront difficult issues with courage and integrity. Her classrooms serve as a safe space for students to take risks, make mistakes, and ultimately to learn and grow. Ms. Delato goes above and beyond to provide students with the necessary background knowledge and context to level the playing field. She passionately guides them until they are capable of independent success. Her dedication to her craft is evident in every meticulously crafted lesson, tailored to ensure the accessibility for all students. Ms. Delato exemplifies unwavering dedication, leading with empathy while maintaining academic rigor. I extend my heartfelt gratitude for your tireless efforts, your patience, and your unwavering commitment to our students' success. Congratulations on achieving tenure. I eagerly anticipate many more years of witnessing the positive impact you continue to make in the lives of our students. Congratulations. All right, Adrian Handelman is next. I am privileged and delighted to acknowledge Ms. Adrian Hamilton this evening. Ms. Handelman became part of the ETHS community a few years ago, bringing with her a wealth of teaching experience, a perpetual smile, and a courageous spirit. I was going to editorialize all of which are crucially important at ETHS. From the outset, she has demonstrated a willingness to take on any task with her characteristic smile, which rarely fades, and an abundance of inquiries. One of Ms. Handelman's most distinctive qualities is her naturally curious nature. She generally strives to understand and connect with everyone she encounters, and she brings the same enthusiasm to her classroom. Students quickly come to realize that Ms. Handelman is genuinely interested in them and their preferred learning methods, contributing significantly to the positive classroom environment she fosters. Ms. Handelman's questioning isn't merely superficial. She actively listens and seeks to comprehend and learn from the responses she receives. During her first year at ETHS, after just a few conversations, she recommended a book to me to read. Intrigued, I followed her suggestion and found myself engrossed in a text I wouldn't have chosen for myself, and dawned on me how attentively she listens. This same attentiveness is evident in her interactions with students in the classroom. She creates a welcoming atmosphere where every student feels valued based on her thoughtful responses to their academic and social needs. It has been a pleasure to both personally and professionally acquaint myself with Ms. Handelman. I extend my heartfelt gratitude for your dedication, perseverance, and unwavering commitment to our students. Congratulations on achieving tenure. I eagerly anticipate many more years of witnessing the positive impact you continue to make on the lives of our students. Congratulations. Laura Jewell. All right. I am delighted to acknowledge Ms. Laura Jewell, an educator who fearlessly advocates for students who often feel marginalized and overlooked. Her unwavering support for our gamers and our LGBTQIA+ students reflects her dedication to every individual in our school community, both inside and outside the classroom. Ms. Jewell has demonstrated remarkable courage by speaking out in support of various members of the ETHS community. Importantly, her students view her as a trusted ally in their academic and personal journeys. They feel comfortable seeking her guidance and support. Furthermore, Ms. Jewell has actively contributed to the English department, participating in meetings and engaging in meaningful discussions within small groups. I remember when Ms. Jewell was a student teacher here. She modestly invited me to observe her work with senior-level students. Despite her initial reservations, she exhibited determination and quiet resolve. Today, she exudes confidence and bravery as she stands before her students every day, nurturing their growth and development. I extend my heartfelt gratitude for your hard work and dedication to our students. Congratulations on achieving tenure. No more round of applause for Ms. Buck. You go right through here, and you go get a pin. Congratulations. Awesome. Good work.
I really want you all to stand right here together. So, Yula.
Whatever the boss says.
Next up, we have Ms. Nicole Parker from the History and Social Sciences Department, who is arranging a tableau.
All right, good evening. And part of me, I'm gonna, my comments are here on my phone. So, in preparation for today, I've been reflecting on my experiences and relationships with these three educators that I'm introducing today. I arrived at the conclusion that I am very blessed to be working with each of them. I've been here almost 28 years, and I've seen quite a bit. And I've had the occasion to hire many teachers. But these teachers who stand here with me are phenomenal educators. And I appreciate them because they truly care about our students. So first, we have Yula Bekyaris. Yula began at ETHS, filling a one-year leave here, and that was in 2021. She came to us with a variety of experiences, including completing an undergraduate degree in Greece and a graduate degree in Scotland. At ETHS, Yula has taught humanities, civics, philosophy, human behavior, and AP psychology. She has been an integral part of our humanities, civics, and AP psychology teams, contributing to curriculum development and assessment design. She's also served as a member of our district anti-racist working group and has successfully completed our Evanston's Educator Academy, as all of them have. Yula's accomplishments in her first three years at ETHS are admirable. But what I appreciate most about her are her thoughtfulness and creativity. She is thorough and careful in her preparation for teaching, and she always centers her students' needs above all else. Next, we have Carly Crichton. Carly brought her posse. I heard them in the back. Carly also began teaching in 2021. And her path to our department began in the summer after an unexpected resignation from another teacher. I share this because I often remark how fortunate I was to have found her in the summer. Carly brings humor and creativity to her classroom and our department meetings as well. And while I appreciate both, behind, I know she's doing something over there. Behind the creativity and humor is a serious educator who uses both of these attributes to make US history and civics come alive for all of our students, including our emergent multilingual students. She serves as a vital member of that team. And as evidence, I can't walk through the hallways without us getting stopped by students who want to say hello or check in with her. She too has distinguished herself at ETHS. She has also been a member of our district anti-working group, our literacy committee, and she currently serves as an equity learning team facilitator. And last but not least, like others here tonight, Ryan Berkeley began her teaching at ETHS during the pandemic. She actually began teaching on Zoom. But that's not when I first met her. You see, she's my student. Former, former, sorry, not still. She's a grown woman now, but former student. And that's really special. That's rare. You don't get to see your former student grow up. All right, I'm back. Ryan currently teaches humanities history, US history, and debate. She has successfully revitalized and revamped our debate curriculum. And we have a district goal of integrating social-emotional learning into our classroom. And Ryan seamlessly connects social-emotional learning with history comment, content. She's actually a master at this, and I do not use that word lightly. I've told her this. Outside the classroom, Ryan is a collaborator, both with other colleagues in the history and English departments, and she also serves as a soccer coach for our women's varsity team. I'm so thankful to you to have been your teacher and to now be your colleague, working with you to serve our students. Please join me in congratulating these wonderful educators. Thank you. Go to the circle. Yes, it was a good year. It was a good year.
All right, next, we have Mr. Dale Efor from the Mathematics Department.
Yeah, we're doing our alphabet in the back. We're like H, I, J, K. We're math people, so it was difficult for us. And Nicole gave us a history lesson. It's only 27 years for me, Nicole, so, yeah. And I remember a soccer manager from back in the day, so congratulations. I have three teachers to introduce tonight, and I'll start with my good friend, Justin Dunn. It's a great pleasure and privilege to recommend Justin for tenure this year. He definitely has earned it. He came to us from Zion Benton, and we were incredibly happy to have him here. He was at Zion Benton for a year, and then we've had him here, and we've been more than fortunate to have him. And he originally started as a student teacher here for a year, and we enjoyed having him there. But I go way back in the day with Justin. Justin, I first met him at summer camp, Makajuan. My chaperone and friend is in the audience tonight. So I met Justin at summer camp, and that was the first time I got a chance to meet him. And I said, "This guy has, he's something special." And so he was able to come student teach with us. He went off to Zion Benton for a year, and we stole him back. And he's been here with us, and he came back home to ETHS. And now he only bleeds orange and blue. He doesn't even know colors, like green or blue or maroon even exist. Isn't that right, Justin? He's a coach and a soccer fan. He's always very active, both inside and outside of the classroom. He currently teaches one algebra, geometry, and AP precalculus, and he continuously works to connect with students and improve his craft. The relationships that you're able to build with students and the support you continuously offer is commendable, noticed, and appreciated. One highlight of Justin for me is his care for those around him. This is for his students as well as his colleagues. His enthusiasm and boundless energy is contagious. One time, I was observing Justin in class, and I tried to follow this guy around for one minute, trying to catch what he was saying and doing. And after about a minute, I lost my breath because he was running around the classroom. He's got tons of energy in the classroom and out. I just couldn't keep up, and I'm still trying to this day. Your mentor, Aaron Slade, said, "Justin cares more than anyone I know about doing right by kids. He works hard to help every single student and makes every student feel seen and appreciated." Please join me in congratulating Justin Dunn. It is a great pleasure and privilege to recommend Naras Javia for tenure at Evanston Township High School. Pause for applause. Got it? I didn't read my speech for, well. Naras came to us from Mesa, Arizona, where he was an engineering and mathematics teacher. He may have come from Arizona, but we can't seem to get him to stop talking about Georgia. Why is that? Right from the start, it was hard to miss Naras' energy, creativity, and enthusiasm. Wait till you hear what Mr. Gordon has to say about you in a minute. Naras is a wonderful math teacher. He's also active outside of the classroom. He's coached three years of ETHS feeder basketball. He has done some philanthropic work with students, and he was voted the Person of the Year by Time Magazine in 2006. Look it up. He has consulted with Arizona State University on working to modernize educational practices in the Navajo Nation. Naras currently teaches, wait for it, geometry, geometry support, intro to engineering, design, and geometry, and data science. A man of many talents. He's constantly learning and improving his practice. One highlight for me about Naras is his boundless energy and creativity. He creates things, such as stump the teacher and the weekly gratitude activity, which I appreciated when I got to see that in action. It's hard to be around Naras without having a huge smile. Look around the room. Everybody smile awkwardly. His mentor, Glennford Gordon, said, "It's been a pleasure to know and work with Naras. I'm absolutely impressed by his kindness, attention to detail, his professional growth, and being way over-prepared for anything he does." I remember the summer when I was asked to be his mentor. Naras was sending many, 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 sorry, I'm quote, many, many, many texts, making sure he was up to speed on everything. He's a burst of energy, always has a huge smile and greeting, not only for the students he teaches, but for his peers as well. He's an amazing person and a great addition to our math department and ETHS. Please join me in congratulating Naras Javia. I do have one more, and Dr. Marlon couldn't be here tonight, Dr. Ella Marlon. She's watching from home, so everybody can wave to the camera. So, and I will read the speech if that's okay with all of you. It's my pleasure and privilege to recommend Dr. Ella Marlon for tenure at Evanston Township High School. Pause for applause. Sorry. Ella's an ETHS graduate. Oh, there's another pause for applause. Who worked as a math teacher at Evanston Township High School from 1994 to 2007. She went off to work in math consulting until she felt the draw to come back to the classroom. And we are so glad that she did. Her orange and blue blood called her back home. And we are so glad that she did. Her orange and blue blood called her back home. Ella has been an integral part of curriculum development during her time with us at ETHS. She has led work in one algebra, which actually led to some of her consulting work in between her two stints at Evanston Township High School. She's currently a leader on her AP precalculus implementation, which again is implemented, implemented for every precalculus student here at ETHS. She always practices cutting-edge instructional practices in her classroom, weaving in technology and items from the students' lives in her class so they can see themselves in the world around them. Ella has been involved in many programs here at ETHS, including the social emotional learning committee, our Avid program, Axel, as well as our summer geometry program with a specific focus on high-level mathematics for all students, particularly our students of color. Ella currently teaches two algebra, advanced two algebra honors, and AP precalculus. One thing that stands out to me in your teaching is your ability to teach mathematics while also connecting closely with students, showing them the relevance of the mathematics in their everyday lives and having them be in community with you. When I asked your mentor, your favorite thing about you, Ella, Don Eddy, she said, "I need so much more time to pick the perfect thing to say because there's just too much that is special about Ella." Please join me in congratulating Dr. Ella Marlon.
And with the team huddle is Ms. Jamie Reinhardt from the Special Education Department.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to say a few words about our three teachers in the Special Education Department being recommended for tenure tonight. We are going to switch over from Comedy Central to the Hallmark Channel right now. All right. So the first teacher that I would like to honor and acknowledge is Ayanna Evans. Sometimes you're afforded, let's start crying early on this. Sometimes you're afforded the opportunity to travel a journey with someone. And though your paths are different, you still travel together. This is Ayanna Evans and me. We worked together in the classroom as a paraprofessional and teacher team. And during this time, Ayanna was working toward her licensure and was as steadfast then in her beliefs around student independence and focus on post-high school skills as she is now. She is so dedicated to supporting students toward independence. Not only independent living skills that have to do with budgeting, hygiene, maintaining a household, but independent thinking skills, critical thinking skills. Throughout her four years in the classroom at ETHS, Ms. Evans has equipped hundreds of students with critical thinking skills to navigate the world around them by questioning the status quo, thinking about their community and being responsible for it, and thinking about their place in the world and what they want for themselves. Ms. Evans has taught civics in both the general education and special education environments since she began working as a teacher at ETHS. And every time I observe her class, I can't help but get involved in discussion because she brings her lessons to life. When we talk about discussing race and equity in the classroom and having courageous conversations with students, Ms. Evans' instruction is a prime example. Thank you, Ms. Evans, for your unwavering dedication to students' independence and your focus on their self-advocacy through critical thinking. Congratulations. Jackie Grishow. Jackie began her career with ETHS as a science teacher in self-contained classrooms in the Special Education Department, as well as a learning strategies teacher. Since that time, she has specialized in providing individualized student supports exclusively in learning strategies classes. Jackie uses her exceptional organizational and communication skills to support the success of students on her caseload. She is a strong advocate for her students, not only communicating regularly with students, families, and outside providers, but she also teaches her students how to advocate for themselves. As a current case manager of juniors, Jackie strikes the balance of providing her students support and autonomy, feeding her direct support so students can feel the success they have earned and reflect on their accomplishments. Jackie has also made substantial contributions to the department and district in her brief time here, sitting on multiple committees and constantly willing to contribute her developing leadership skills. Thank you, Jackie, for your endless engagement in and support of student success and improving our community. And we have Craig Woolens. I have heard it said that special education teachers can teach anything due to the nature of the licensure. And this has certainly been true in Craig's case. He began his time at ETHS as a long-term substitute in biology, followed by a semester-long substitute teaching assignment, teaching geometry. And since that time, Craig has taught junior English, learning strategies, reading, freshman reading, and sophomore reading. Each time his course load changed, Craig met the transition with optimism and a positive attitude. Forever dedicated to his craft, Craig looked at each new class as an opportunity to build his knowledge of different subjects and his wealth of instructional strategies. Craig engages students in building the fundamental life skill of reading by incorporating their interests and providing them with choice in the classroom. Craig, thank you for your unwavering willingness to flex your instructional strategies to meet the needs of students and the department.
And next up is our Student Services Department, Dr. Mia Lovizo and Ms. Sarah Long.
All right, I'm Sarah Long. I'm the Director of Student Services. And I would like to congratulate Imani Wilson first from my department. I'm honored to recognize Imani Wilson tonight as she earns her tenure status. Imani is persistent, driven, and passionate. She works diligently to promote equitable outcomes at ETHS. She serves as a resource to her colleagues and other social workers and strives to support the growth of the social work team, as, as well as the entire department. Imani is very deserving of all praise and recognition tonight as someone who plays a crucial role in the Student Services Department. Congratulations. All right, and then I'm going to recognize Damaris Rodriguez, who unfortunately is not able to join us physically here in person tonight, but I'd still like to read a few words about her. The Student Services Department is fortunate to have Damaris Rodriguez as our lead social worker. Damaris is a motivated, passionate individual who serves as an indisputable leader. She works tirelessly to promote change within our department. She is a great advocate for our students, and she is certainly an asset to our team. I'm proud to honor Damaris tonight as she earns her well-deserved tenure status. So congrats to her as well.
Thank you, guys, for having us, and this will be brief, but the last is the best, so. So I am recommending and proudly Dr. Michelle Wheeler. Dr. Wheeler is an exemplary nurse who embodies dedication to students and a commitment to leading our nursing staff with excellence. She has an unwavering compassion and tireless advocacy for student health. She goes above and beyond to ensure every child receives the care and support they need. Her leadership extends beyond individual care. She fosters a culture of collaboration and professional development among her nursing team, empowering them to excel in their roles. The Student Services Department is fortunate to have her on our team. Congratulations on receiving tenure, Dr. Wheeler.
All right, and last we have Ms. Dinafrio from our World Languages Department honoring four teachers this evening, and that will be the end of our tenure recommendations. Thank you.
All right, thank you all so much. I'm going to first speak about our two teachers that couldn't be here with us tonight. Kanan Daudi is proof that I need to go with my gut and get out of my comfort zone. During the Zoom interview process, I was really drawn to him, but he talked in circles, and he had really good ideas and nice vibes. But then the Zoom teaching demo, there were tech difficulties, he didn't have teaching experience, he didn't answer questions in like straight lines, but there was something about him, and it won me order over. And four years later, I'm pleased to say that I was right, and I'm really fortunate to have Kanan earning tenure. In his four years here, much to his chagrin, Kanan's preps continue to change. He's taught levels one, two, three, four, and five of French, and next year he'll be teaching French as a heritage language. His ESL certification and his efforts to teach the entire Francophone culture really make him qualified to do so. His classroom is constantly visited by students and staff alike. He is committed to the ETHS pillars of literacy, equity, social emotional learning, and post-secondary planning. Here are two quotes that are more eloquent than I could ever be. Kanan is a teacher who has the amazing ability to make anyone feel immediately comfortable in his presence. He is thoughtful and kind and generally wants to get to know students for who they are. He is a culturally responsive teacher who finds ways to incorporate his students' lives, identities, and stories into the way he teaches French. He sponsors several before and after student groups to create spaces for students to connect around shared identities and passions. Most importantly, he is a person who is always authentic to himself, which makes him a wonderfully approachable colleague and teacher. Congratulations to Kanan. We hope you're eating right now. Hi, Emily, we know you're watching. When I started at ETHS 13 years ago, we offered eight sections of American Sign Language. Now we consistently offer 18 sections. It's our second most popular language. I am thrilled that we found such a talented teacher to add to our team, and I'm so excited that Emily Noble earns tenure tonight. Emily is beloved by her teammates, fellow teachers, and students alike. Ms. Kay has a positive can-do attitude. In teaching ESL, she has taught levels one, two, and three. She is creative and out of the box. She will go the extra mile above and beyond for any student, even not on her roster. Here are some of her colleagues' words about her. "From day one, you have gone above and beyond expectations to help your students learn and be successful in class and in life. Your students and colleagues look up to you and respect you for your hard work and dedication. We sure are lucky to have you at ETHS." And "There are few other teachers that I would rather run into on a sleepy morning coming into work than Emily Noble. She radiates positive energy, and inevitably, I find myself smiling in her presence. She's an incredibly bright, dynamic teacher who has the ability to lift the spirits of any student lucky enough to be in her class. Emily, it was a sign that you were meant to be part of our World Languages family. Congratulations on earning tenure." Hi, Emily. Okay, congratulations to Ashley Cummings on earning tenure. Ashley has taught French I, French III and III honors, and French IV advanced honors. She'll be teaching French AP next year. She spearheaded the trip to France this school year just last week, allowing 30 students to travel and experience another culture. She is a consummate professional from her meticulously planned lessons, her warm and welcoming classroom, her use of the target language in class, and her support of students both in and outside of the classroom. Her colleagues describe her so eloquently. Here are some snippets. "It always sounds like your classes are having a blast. Your students love and respect you. This is shown by them popping by and saying hi, hanging out during their lunch or free periods. You provide such a welcoming and loving environment." Ashley is an educator who, educator who exudes confidence, professionalism, and passion for both her students and her content area. She is a collaborative colleague who has worked hard with her fellow French teachers to refine and improve the French curriculum. She is creative and dynamic in the classroom, and she takes great care with her work. Ashley is driven, ambitious, unstoppable, professional, and motivated. Ashley is one of the most creative language teachers I have ever met. She has amazing ideas and uses them to craft highly engaging lessons that immerse students in French culture. Her enthusiasm is contagious, and it makes me want to study French. Ashley, I'm so, I'm so excited and glad that you've decided to make our department your language home. Congratulations on earning tenure. Congratulations to Margaret Connell on earning tenure. An ETHS graduate who began her language journey in our Japanese program and attended our Japanese trip, she substitute taught and student taught here before becoming, before beginning part-time, helping to grow our program from six to 10 sections of Japanese. In her years here, Margaret has taught all levels of Japanese, has taught English as a second language, coached state winners at Japan Bowl, organized student hosting experience of our exchange, supported fundraising efforts, and been a voice for change, equity, and authenticity. She values relationships with her students. She truly knows and sees each one, including below-the-line information. She is eager to learn and grow, welcoming and seeking out constructive feedback. She works to grow and collaborate with her colleagues, and she is well-respected by all. Here are some highlights from her colleagues. It was difficult to, difficult to edit these down. So Margaret, read these unedited comments later.
Okay.
Okay. Margaret's knowledge of Japanese culture is extensive, and she approaches culture with such a nuanced lens that includes critical comparisons and connections to American society. Her passion and expertise draw students in and creates an environment of inquiry and enthusiasm. I have seen very few early-career teachers with a level of professionalism and dedication to their own growth as a teacher as Margaret. She is constantly examining her teaching practice for ways that she can best serve her students. She is bold. She is willing to try creative, new approaches to best connect with her classes. She is authentic to herself. She is unafraid to speak up for what is best practice. She is passionate about connecting students with the Japanese language and culture while also offering, honoring who they are as individuals. Margaret, I'm so happy that you've come full circle. From wild kid alum to wild kid teacher, I look forward to having your voice in our discussions for always. Congratulations.
I know that, I know that, that most of the teachers, the new tenure teachers are leaving. So we're going to take a quick break, like a five-minute break, and then we'll prepare for our next big agenda item.
Let's start, we have all the board members present.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, welcome. Thank you for coming. Our next agenda item is the Student Discipline Report, and Dr. Campbell, are you going to?
Yeah, so we're going to welcome our Dr. Robinson, our Associate Principal of Educational Services, and the Dean Team for 2324. They're introduced themselves, and I'm sure, you know, as we read the report, we are preparing our hearts and minds for a difficult conversation. And if we were to engage the tools for courageous conversations, I'm sure that, like myself, I was spinning around the compass in thinking, feeling, acting, and believing. And, but I'm asking for us to lean in and listen to what we have been doing, and we have some very sobering things to discuss, and we'll also be talking about what do we plan to do. So with that said, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Robinson, who will begin.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell, and hello, Board. Always good to see you. I look forward to this time of year, because it's a time for us to connect and for us to give you the heads-up and just keep you in the loop with some of the work that's going on at ETHS. This year, as Dr. Campbell mentioned, the data, when we pulled it and reviewed it, was concerning, and we can't wait to share with you what the data is and also what we're doing about it. So I'm happy to introduce my team here. We tried this a couple of years ago, and I think it's great, because it really humanizes the people who care for our students on a day-to-day basis. So this is our current team. Ms. Boyd, she's, she's almost a vet now. Ms. Hinkle, who's new to us, who's supporting the class of 26. Dean Soriano has been here for quite some time and supporting our juniors. And we have Mr. Moore, he's, again, new to us, this year supporting our sophomore class. Freshman class, I'm sorry. This office cannot run without the support of our administrative assistants, Angie Harding and Kevin Augusta, and also want to give a shout-out to Michael Williams, who supports our Alternative Learning Center, aka in-school suspension. So the work that we are presenting tonight is that of our old, our previous team, Dean Conchola, Boyd, Soriano, and Shanahan. So I just wanted to kind of frame that and kick it off with Dean Hinkle.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start off by taking this opportunity to summarize the discipline philosophy. We in the Dean's Office are committed to promoting a safe learning environment at ETHS by following the core discipline beliefs. Students, and I'm going to summarize that instead of reading it point by point. Students have the right to learn in a safe learning environment. We use prevention and intervention measures through instruction and restorative practices. There is a shared responsibility for problem-solving. We honor identities and developmental needs. We teach, model, and reinforce social-emotional needs as we collaborate with all stakeholders in an effort to ensure safety. The next slide is the agenda for today's presentation. There will be a review of the district goals in relation to the Dean's Office. Students involved in disciplinary incidents, who the students are and what they did, types of disciplinary incidents, review of national research and correlations to ETHS, suspensions in relation to the entire student population and the federal race codes, trends as we explore past and current data, and looking ahead, what are we going to do regarding the data presented? So if we're looking at the district goals in relation to the Dean's Office, Goal One, equitable and excellent education. At the end of every quarter, what we do is we review the discipline data, and we take a look at like gender, race, income status, IEP status, and grad year. Goal Two, student well-being. We actually work with a variety of teams throughout the building to make sure that we're assisting and supporting our students' needs. We work with the SST team, 504 teams, IEP teams, throughout the course of the year. We also supervise extracurricular events, further building bonds and relationships with stakeholders throughout the community. Goal Three, fiscal accountability. We work with ALAB, which is the Alternative Learning Opportunities Program. We also work with the IIRP, which is the International Institute for Restorative Practices. We also engage in professional development as we go throughout the school year, especially when we see a need to actually refresh and understand new research that's coming, that has been put forth. We also work with the Student Empowerment Program. And in Goal Four, we have community engagement and partnerships. We are currently working with Northwestern, researching with them, things like truancy. Why is it happening? Why do we see such a high rate of truancy throughout the building? And we are establishing an MOU with the City of Evanston Youth and, I'm sorry, Youth and Young Adult Division.
Good evening. Try that again. Good evening. Couldn't use my outside voice. All right, so thank you for the review of the goals. Our work really lends itself to Goal Two, the Student Well-Being Goal, where the goal that we have stated is 100% of students do not receive a behavior referral. So we are proud that 79% of our students are following the three Rs. They're demonstrating respect for themselves, others, and the community. So 79% of our students have not received a conduct referral, so we're happy about that. We're going to take a look at the unique number of students who created incidents. So we are all speaking the same language. An incident means that an adult in this building wrote a conduct referral for a student for some sort of behavior. It was sent to one of the four of us, and we met with the student, gave them due process, and escalated that referral into an incident. So that's how an incident is created. So again, 748 unique students created incidents last year. We had a total of 2,585 incidents created. Mr. Soriano will speak more to that in just a moment. Here, we are a little disappointed to see that more than half of the students who created incidents were involved in two or more. So that's a little concerning, and we'll take a deeper dive into that. So unfortunately, part of the troubling news is that we saw a 20% increase in the number of students who created incidents in the 2223 school year. The year before, we had 629 students, and now, as you see, we're up to 748 students who created an incident. So there's work to be done in that area, and this data tells us that there is definitely a need for some more support. So let's take a look at the number of incidents created per student. We'll take a look at the first category, student, the number of incidents created per unique student, one through five incidents. So the majority of students received one, five or fewer referrals that turned into an incident. So that's, we're happy about that. I do want to direct your attention to the bottom half of the screen, where you see 16 to 20 and 21 or more incidents. So those are 30 students, they make up about 4%, who demonstrated a high need for support, prevention, and interventions. So we looked at these students, and these 30 in particular are majority students who identify as black or brown. The majority of these students have an IEP, and the majority of these students are on either free or reduced lunch. Some of these students were outplaced because they demonstrated such a high need for support, and perhaps we weren't able to meet the needs here. So we definitely, as Dean Hinkle said, take a look at our quarterly data, and, you know, we know who we're seeing frequently, and that's reflected in the 16 through 21. Of some concern, we did have students who had upwards of 50 incidents created. So there are some students who are presenting with a variety of needs. Okay, let's take a look by federal race code. So as you will see in this and the subsequent screens, we are looking at the unique number of students in one column, the percentage of students with incidents. Then we're going to look at the number of the entire student group, so the population of, in the school. So for example, well, let me back up, and then the percentage of the total student group. So for black African-American students, we had, again, 748 unique students created an incident, 316 of them were black. So that's 42% of the students who created incidents, and 38% of the overall black student population. If you look at Hispanic Latino, at 180 students, and white, 187 students who created incidents. When we look at our black African-American and Hispanic Latino together, that's a combined 66%. So about two-thirds of our students who created incidents identify as either black or brown. We also take a look by gender. There's nothing really alarming here, we saw similar data in previous reports. We also look at the intersection of race and gender. So we'll take a look, black African males are 24% of the students with incidents, then followed by females, excuse me, black African-American females, followed by white males, followed by Latino males, then Latina females, and then white females. So I'll draw your attention to the percentage of the student group. Looking at black African-American males, it's 42% of the entire student, the black student population have created an incident. That's definitely of some concern. So we also take a look by grad year. If you notice, the class of 2026, that was last year's freshman, our current sophomores. Last year, I think we, trying to think of the way to explain this, we noticed that our students who came in as freshmen last year came in with a high level of need. That's who we saw most frequently in the office. We saw it, we felt it, we worked with them, engaging in a number of interventions and preventions, and we can still see the effects of that this year with this current, the current sophomores. So we've had an even distribution of freshmen, sophomore, junior, seniors in previous years, but this is definitely an uptick for our current sophomores, last year's freshmen. As we, Ms. Hinkle said, we do look at our quarterly data. This school year, first semester, first and second quarter, we could see that our current freshmen and our current sophomores are presenting with a very, very high level of need. So you'll see this again as we look at the number of incidents, so I just want to draw your attention to that. I hope you keep that in the back of your mind as we think about how we can help support our freshman and sophomore students and our incoming students. We look at income status, so 61% of the students who were involved in incidents received free or reduced lunch. And about one-third of the students who created incidents were on free and reduced lunch. We also look by IEP status. So we see that about a third of our students who have IEPs created a disciplinary incident last year. We also look at emergent multilingual status, and we had 13% of students were emergent multilingual, and 87% were non-emergent multilingual, who were involved in disciplinary incidents. We look at this data over a decade, approximately a decade, and we could see, we did have the COVID year, and if you look at 21, 22, and 22, 23, we can see that, that 21% increase in the number of students involved. So we are, it appears that we're trending upwards in terms of the number of students Mr. Soriano.
Thank you, good evening. I wanted to look at further the incidents, the disciplinary incidents that we had. As this information, as we're looking at it, I think we'll point again to the fact that we have 381 students that were involved in two or more incidences. And, and that's, that's something that, you know, we were thinking about, is let's focus on what, what they are doing that continues to happen. So as we look at the next slide, you see that substantial number. It's a jump, 52% percentage points going up here from the 1705. The incidence is from 21, 22 to this past year, 25, 85. And once again, we have to look at where is it focused at? And where are those numbers growing the most? As, and immediately, you see it on the next slide here. The first category is the 1,096 unauthorized presence. And that category, we, that seems maybe, it could seem a bit kind of general and not specific enough to figure out where these students are. If they're in unauthorized presence, what does that mean? Well, this for, we've tried to correct that for this, this next report that we will do for next year. It'll state unauthorized presence, unauthorized presence, unauthorized, unauthorized area, unauthorized presence if a student left a classroom without permission, unauthorized presence, students leaving the building without permission. So that way, we can kind of focus on, on where that, where that situation occurred and how to address that better. If we look at the next category, which is another 450 incidents, and 17.4%, that's disrupting the school environment. I think there's, there could be some connection between those two based on the disruption that they could cause to the building. If we're talking about students that are roaming the hallways, disturbing outside of classrooms, disrupting other, other instruction throughout the building. So if we add those together, we have almost 60%, 59.8% of all of those incidences are falling in those categories. That's the great majority of the, of the incidents falling in these categories. And that's where we need to look at a little bit deeper. And that's where Dr. Robinson is going to discuss some research that he found.
I think when we looked at it, you know, we're like, what the heck is going on? What happened in every, you know, category? And ironically, about two weeks ago, we saw this article in the New York Times, why school absences have exploded almost everywhere. So I was kind of relieved to see this because I know it's not unique to ETHS. This is something that's trending nationally. And our data reflects the national trends that are going on. And just to pull out some of the, what I thought was really important things to note from the article. One of the researchers talked about, you know, the absenteeism today, again, which is Soriano just talked about, the unauthorized presence, you know, insularity. This, this all falls together. It's the leading factor hindering the nation's recovery from the pandemic learning loss, educational experts will say. And of course, students can't learn if they're not in school. We know this, but we are still recovering from the pandemic. It's still impacted us immensely. And it's not just us. The article further talks about, you know, how it's multifaceted and complex, the problems that are going on. It goes on to mention nationally, what are the reasons that's causing the, this horrible trend of truancy? You know, some students are caring for younger siblings. Parents are incorrectly thinking that students are doing better than what they're doing. Students are staying home when sick, not just with COVID, with also more routine colds and viruses. Students are still struggling with mental health. Missing school is a symptom of the pandemic-related challenges and also a cause. Students who are behind may not want to attend, which sets them back any further. And of course, we know this, anxious students may avoid school. Hiding out fuels their anxiety. This really kind of brought it home for me. Dr. Rosenbaum talked about this notion of fight or flight. Both absenteeism and behavioral outbursts are examples of human stress response. It's playing out en masse in schools with the fight, both verbal and physical aggression, or flight with truancy and absenteeism. We, and, and it's really localized and proximate to what we're doing as well. I'll pass this down.
So to continue, look at the incidences and kind of the breakdown of them further. 59% of the incidents were by male students, 41% by female students. This slide is by federal race code. And once again, the breakdown that we, we've kind of repeated in other slides. This one notes that there's 79% of all incidences of the 25, 85, 20, 2585 incidents are by students of color. So that's, that's what this slide just tells us. This is the grad year. Once again, we used to have more of an even kind of distribution through, by the grades, about 25, 22 to 25% for each grade level. This last year, we saw the class of 2026, and we're seeing some of our trends right now, trending towards 2027 being something similar with, with a higher need. And we've looked at kind of some of the different reasons of, of what has caused that. And I know that we are planning to address those and discuss more about addressing some of those concerns with, at the end of our presentation. Income status, 70, 70, about three quarters of, a little over three quarters of all incidents were by students with free or reduced lunch. And as far as IEPs, about 60, 59% non-IEP, 41% IEP students. Similar, I believe, to last year's breakdown. And our last category is emergent multilingual students. And their status attributed for 17% of all the referrals that we, incidences, excuse me, that we had last year, and 83 by non-EM students.
Good evening to all the distinguished board members. I will present the suspension data from the 2022, 23 school year. In-school and out-of-school suspensions are issued as a last resort by the deans after other interventions have been tried. Behaviors that are deemed a threat or a safety concern or to others in the building, such as fighting, being in possession of a weapon, threat to harm someone, or drug offenses are the main offenses that may warrant an in-school or out-of-school suspension. Last school year, we had a total of 347 incidents that resulted in referrals that required in-school or out-of-school suspension. These incidents involve 213 students. When we look at a breakdown of the students who received in-school suspensions, we had a total of 228 incidents with 163 unique students for a total of 313 in-school suspension days for those students. Out-of-school suspension of 151 incidents, we had 103 students, which totaled at 582 out-of-school suspension days. When we take a look at the, the incidents which required in-school suspension, as you can see, the drug possession, drug usage, kind of combined, those were the two big ones, along with physical attack without weapon or injury. Our out-of-school suspension shows that the biggest incidents that required out-of-school suspension were, there were 33 incidents, along with the mob action. And those required, that was 22% for the physical attack. The mob action incidents, that was 12%. For these two particular slides, when you look at the drug possession, drug usage, and you have some in-school, and then on the other side, you may have some out-of-school, the, the big difference with those are sometimes, they may be the same students, but the in-school suspension may be tried first. And then it may have escalated over time, maybe a second event, third event. Maybe the amount of the, you know, the stu, the drug that the student had may resulted in out-of-school suspension.
Here, if I can just add, what's interesting here, just to notice, is your subjective behaviors. Students are not being suspended out of school for these subjective behaviors. Being entirely being, you know, with a perceived whatever. These are pretty hard-line behaviors that is, again, not subjected.
When we look at the students, the suspension by federal race code, in-school suspension, black African-American students for in-school suspension, there was 40, 45%. Hispanic Latino, 28%. And white students, 18% are received in-school suspension. Out-of-school suspension, there are 57% of the students suspended out of school, outside of school, were black African-Americans. 27% Hispanic Latino, and 7% white students. When we look at these numbers by gender, we have 71% of the students who receive in-school suspension were male. 29% of the students were female. And the students outside of school for outside suspensions, 58% were male and 42% were female. When we look at the suspensions by the graduation year for these 347 incidents, as previous speakers mentioned, our highest number unfortunately was this, our freshmen, which are now our sophomore students, and they accounted for 41% of our in-school suspensions from last school year. When we look at the out-of-school suspensions, we came with the, the same class, 2026, accounted for 36% of the students that were suspended outside of school. 77% of all suspensions involve students who receive free and reduced lunch. 84% of, of outside suspensions involve students who also receive free and reduced lunch. Suspensions by the income stat, by income status, 69% of the students who received in-school suspension were free, are free and reduced lunch. 31% of those students were full-pay students. Outside suspensions for free and reduced lunch, 82%. And our full-pay students for lunch was 18%. For our students who are IEPs, in-school suspension, 31% of those students. Non-IEP students, 69%. Out-of-school suspension for IEP students was 33%. And non-IEP students, 67%. Emergent multilingual students for, received 16% of the in-school suspension, while non-emergent bilingual students, multilingual students, 84%. And out-of-school, non-emergent multilingual students, 7% for out-of-school, and non-emergent multilingual students, 93%.
Now, we, we will review some trends. This particular slide shows incidents resulting in suspension involving the entire student population. There were in total 2,585 incidents last school year. However, 347 of those incidents resulted in a suspension, which is only 13% of the total number of incidents. Of the 347 suspensions, black and brown students continue to demonstrate a need for more complex supports. And these are students who have always needed the support. So for me, this really isn't something new. It's just figuring out, how do we meet the complex needs of these students? If you take a look at the bottom of this chart, if we take a look at the students who are receiving free and reduced lunch, we have 269 of the 347 who have been suspended, and that's 78%. The next slide. As we continue to explore this data regarding the entire student population, this particular graph shows the number of students suspended one or more times over the course of a little more than a decade. More notable is that there is a decrease in numbers once we returned from COVID in the 2020, I'm sorry, 21, 22 school year. And last year, we began to see an upward trend, signal, signal, further signaling that there's a need for support, as I stated in the previous slide. Now, on this particular slide, it allows us to examine the number of students suspended one or more times by the federal race code. This data shows a decrease actually between the 2018, 2019 school year through 2021, 22. This decrease is amongst all categories. That includes black, African-American, Hispanic, Latinx, and white students. So it was showing that we were certainly moving in the right direction and the direction that we want to go in. However, we need to be mindful that the numbers are starting to show an upward, an upward trend since the 2022, 23 school year.
So what are we doing about it? The article, we know, continue to build relationships. It's critical. How do we build deeper relationships? We looked, there's a program in North Cook with whom we've partnered that have student advocates. Student advocates is, is new. Some of the other regional areas of education have used them. They come in and, and they have case, caseloads for about 25 students each. We look at our data, we're like, perhaps this is a way that we could have a deeper relationship with students that's like non-punitive, super relational, help us understand what we can do to best support students. We're also looking at a restorative practices coordinator who can kind of be the conduit for all restorative work in the building. We're going to continue to seek to understand. Somebody mentioned that we have been collaborating with some of the research partners at Northwestern to understand kind of the why. We need to continue to follow data, but we also need the action behind it. And one of the things that, strategies that the article mentioned was home visits seem to be helpful with kind of improving attendance. And again, understanding what other needs are at home. So we just need the board's continued support. And our efforts, you know, we're hoping to learn a lot more from the qualitative and quantitative research that Northwestern is helping us do. And, you know, it's, it's hard work, it's devastating work. It's good work, you know, because I think we have good people in the building to make the commitment to, to improve it. This hits, Dean Boyd opened up, would it really hits the well-being goal of the, of the board. And I am certain in the coming months, when we get the well-being report, you'll see some connections to this work as well. With that, we just had a host of folks with whom to thank for their continued support. Our safety team, our researchers, Ally Hart, Dr. Beavis, thanks for your support on helping us understand the data. Our school resource officers, and again, our safety department. Yeah, we, we, it's a team effort. I feel like we kind of need more team members to, to combat, you know, what, what the new trends and challenges are. We are happy to entertain any Uh, we are happy to entertain any questions, uh, from the board.
Thank you. So first of all, I just, I, I know that the board has questions. I want to thank you for the report. I want to thank you for the honesty of, of this data and this information. It's important that we see it. I appreciate the fact that you are concerned, as are we. Um, and, um, and I just really understand, um, just how challenging this is. And I also understand that there are no quick fixes to this. Um, so, uh, I have a few other questions, but I think I'm gonna ask some of my board members to, to ask their questions first. And, and then, um, if mine doesn't get asked, I'll come back. So, Mira, we'll start with you.
Well, hello, and thank you. I can imagine, um, just that it's not only disturbing, but it, it's painful to know our kids are, um, going through what has brought them to these incidences. Um, I'm trying to kind of put together a question, which is something like, do you think if we looked at the incidences that were disaggregated the incidences by, um, student, that that could help us with a root cause? So, for instance, when we were looking at, um, different trends within different student groups, that we would see a way into tailoring what we do with, with different kids? So, right, 'cause I was looking through this and noticing that I don't think we know which students are, for instance, maybe in the wrong place at the wrong time versus the kids who are, um, another one that doesn't just jump off the top of my head. So, could we learn from that? Um, and then also, I was thinking about, and I think I remember you all reporting that we felt that staff were giving, writing kids up kind of, there were no trends there to be found in the sense of who was writing up which kids. So, I'm trusting that, once you looked at that, that that didn't show us anything. Then another question, I was looking at the male, female, for instance, just one dynamic, um, of who was suspended, and wondering, are those, are we suspending them at the same same severity or the same punishment, if you will, or restorative work based on the same action? So, just kind of digging into that. Lastly, and so that was kind of a statement, but a little bit of a question. I'm so perplexed, and you know, you are all more experts in this area than I am, but I think about some of the recent literature and pieces that are coming out regarding kids who are getting in trouble, who have up to eighty-five percent rate of being identified for IEPs or special ed services. And so I think about, what might we ask ourselves that is not happening for our kids in those spaces to keep them out of the hallways, out of those spaces that they're making more trouble in, that somehow communicate, that they're, they can't learn, or they can't do the thing? Because those numbers are kind of unreal, that we have that level of students within low income and special ed services at our top level, um, within these, um, incidences. So, that says to me that obviously there's something else happening. And while I respect the home and different areas that you mentioned, I think, you know, we have to do it all. But we can control so much more here. And so I just think, how might they feel that they are better off in their classroom? Because I'm guessing, if we looked at grades, like, we don't have, we don't know what their grades are, or where they're, if they belong, you know, to a club or something. But if the eighty percent of them, let's say, don't have, these are better, or don't belong to any other clubs, then, you know, as you said, the well-being piece starts to play a role. And I'm just so curious how we might ask about our classroom spaces or our other spaces that help the kids who are in them, who are successful, stay out of trouble.
So, Mira, you act like.
Let's, let's go to the first one. Well, I mean, they were all very important, so. Um, and I know, as I told you all, speak clearly and honestly about your experiences, because they know what you're saying. And why don't you start with the first one, because I think that was a really good one on the categories, who the kids are, and I know that they can speak.
Yeah, let me, I'll, I'll kick it off, and, and I invite my colleagues to, please just jump in and, and share your truths. Uh, but one of the things that I have noticed, and usually, uh, you know, I, I think I have a pretty good relationship with students, kind of generally speaking, uh, but if it kind of comes to my level, uh, there's typically, um, you know, other needs and concerns, okay? Uh, so one thing that I've always noticed in every single case of a student that has kind of made it to me, uh, you ask the questions and you find out more of what's going on. And oftentimes, um, it's kind of like Pandora's box. A student will come because a behavior, and then you begin to ask questions. And there's just so much more. Uh, where conversations where I've had with parents, it's not about the behavior anymore, it's about all the other stuff. Uh, so at that point, we're really, um, connecting with the grade level teams, the social workers, uh, and other support members in the building to provide different levels of questions and understanding. We were talking about referrals. Man, we got a referral for everything. Uh, from, you know, uh, the literacy center to social workers, to SUI programs, SEP. It's, and so many of our students have the benefit of receiving that support, their strategies, their interventions. Uh, the goal is for them to be better, to do better. Um, but it, it really does kind of just peel the, uh, layer off that onion, uh, where we find that there's so much more, um, so much more needs, I guess, that.
Yeah. And I think, uh, Dean Boyd, uh, referenced this earlier when she was talking to, uh, referring to the slide with the number of students, uh, with fifteen or more referrals, right? Incidences, involved in fifteen or more incidences. And I believe it was, uh, we, we were saying thirty students. And, uh, Dean Boyd and I worked, were here last year, and we were familiar, because we were able to break down who those thirty students were. And we recalled some of those needs, uh, that some of those students needed, um, required, right? Uh, she, you mentioned, I think, Dean Boyd, you mentioned, uh, IEP status is, is, is one. And what we find is, when we are working with students with IEPs, we have to, there's so much documentation that goes into it. Um, and, and steps into getting those additional supports, so that we're not just merely placing students off campus, right? There's a lot of thought and a lot of, uh, steps that go into that. Uh, I think what we found is that some of those students, um, that made up, um, I know you had mentioned, uh, Dean Boyd, when it was, uh, upwards of fifty referrals last year alone, one student. That, that student is, is, I think, crying out for help in some way, and stating, look, I'm not maybe, I don't feel comfortable in the classroom. Um, uh, maybe they're frustrated, embarrassed, ashamed, whatever, to be in a classroom, so then avoidance is all they know at this point. Um, you know, um, conflicts. I know that we, we, we saw on that list, there was also groups of individuals involved in conflicts. Conflicts that e- each, each one of us last year were involved with trying to mediate. At one point, I believe, the, uh, Dr. Robinson was actually sat down in a, in a room approximately the size that we have here, to sit down with these individuals and explain to them what the expectations were, right? Um, I know that we, some of our partners outside of, of ETHS worked with those individuals as well, to try to help the families, try to, you know, uh, remediate the issue. Um, unfortunately, these are, some of these challenges are, are deeper than what we can support. So, so we do our best based on what we have. And it's, we sit, we talk, we listen, we hear the different concerns that they have. We do, you know, Dr. Robinson mentioned the referrals that we have. We have so many supports in, within the building that we lean on to help our students. And, uh, I think we, we can, obviously, it can enrich that and make that even bigger. You know, add more to the toolbox we, as we talked to. Um, and I'm hoping, and I know that this year, I've seen more of it with our restorative practices coordinator, um, which, which has supported us in our work. So, um, I think that, hopefully, that a- addresses some of the questions that you had, and I don't know if my other colleagues, um, my colleagues had some responses as well.
Um, I would like to add that in my short time in a dean's office, um, one of the things that I've noticed is a huge need for familial support outside of ETHS. Even today, um, sitting and having conferences with, um, parents and students, it's just, it's not just single parent homes. Um, there, there are instances when you have both parents in the home. And they're, um, they're, they're just, um, out of sorts as to how to best support their student. Like, if their child isn't motivated to go to class, and that child doesn't understand why or isn't able to articulate why, or, um, and, and it makes it difficult when, um, when the student, him or herself, is unable to articulate to, is unable to articulate that to us, or even realize it, him or herself. And so, um, one of the things that I was thinking about is the fact that although we have a lot of resources available in this building, what do, what, what do we have to offer as an outside resource for these families who need so much support that we are unable to give to them at this point in time? And these are things that I go to sleep with every single night. Because as a former teacher in this building, I've worked with some of these kids, and I've worked with these families. And to hear these stories and to actually feel like you're helpless in being able to support these families, it just, it, it's, it's devastating. But I do appreciate the work that we are able to do, because the parents appreciate, they appreciate it as well.
Um, I would like to add, um, that when we're looking at our freshman and sophomore students, they're clearly coming in with a lot more needs. And it's, um, I know Dr. Robinson referenced the research and talked about the impacts of COVID, but these freshmen and sophomores miss two critical years of development. Educational, um, social-emotional development. Um, we're learning behind a computer screen for two years in elementary, middle school. Um, so that can't be glossed over, and, uh, we can't, um, necessarily articulate, you know, what all that means for them. But, um, we do, our, our, our kids are, are, are missing some skills, communication skills, um, perspective-taking skills, being resilient, um, problem-solving, being able to communicate without screaming. Um, it, so we're just, um, as I think about this, um, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about, um, uh, what comes up for me a lot is, um, you know, we have to have an opportunity or, or means to be able to teach kids some skills. Um, we've got twenty-five percent, twenty-ish percent of the school who's telling us, um, that we need some help in this area. So, we've got to teach some young people, um, how to do some things, how to do school, how to communicate well, how, um, to be a good citizen, how to practice the three Rs. So, um, finding opportunities and ways to be able to teach them outside of our offices, um, will be critical. Um, and you know, um, for those who've seen me at this table before, I'm gonna always, um, lift up reading skills. Um, and the students who come to us reading below grade level, and how that impacts their behavior, class avoidance, the things that they're doing. Um, and then the other thing I'm thinking to answer your question about knowing who did what, yes, um, I've never seen two Asian males fighting in this building. That's not who's getting suspended. Um, so, some of the, the data is really concrete about who did the what, um, in terms of, especially when we're looking at the suspension data and the more egregious offenses, it's really, really clear. Um, what are white students being, um, referred for? Uh, going out, um, for lunch when you got twelve tardies instead of ten, things like that. Um, that's not the only thing, but that's one of the things. So, I think when we're looking really specifically and closely at the suspension data, for example, it's really, there's, again, no subjectivity in what students are being disciplined for. Um, you know, there are students in classrooms before, have you seen two white girls fighting? Nope, but they, they don't see it. It doesn't happen. So, um, you know, I'm always triggered by the word disproportionality, because it's a both-and kind of situation. This is who is, um, engaging in these type of activities. So, um, I hope that answers some of your questions. Um, but that's kind of what's on top for me.
Um, I just would like to add, one thing that we see a great deal of is our students who are, come in, um, and are engaged in activities, whether that's a club, whether that's the band, theater, or a sport, those students have a greater connection to the building. And those students generally have other adults that are giving reinforced and positive connections and the positive messages that are being shared by all the staff within the building. And that allows them to feel, um, to reach out if they have another conflict. And also, again, um, the positive messages are being reinforced. Our students who are, that we send to dean's office on a consistent basis are not bad kids. Those are kids that have not connected, for whatever the reason, inside of our building. And every time a student comes down, I know all of us, especially Dean Hinkle and myself, we have the younger students, we're always asking, what club do you want to join? What activity do, do you want to join? Because then that gives them a, a greater sense of belonging. Those students, for whatever reason, who don't, then they tend to find the negativity. And unfortunately, um, me being an old man, I didn't have social media. So, social media is such a negative influence on our children today, because of, if you look at, unfortunately, students engaging to a fight, and then that fight is immediately uploaded, you would think it's a fight going on in this building every five minutes in, in here, and that's just not the case. But because you can visually see it, it makes it, you know, far worse. So, again, being able to help engage our students and encourage them to join a different activity or a club, I think that'd be something that will continue to help, you know, divert, you know, some of the students from making some bad choices.
Thank you. And I, I, the pieces that I think, um, are so challenging are both the complexity of our community, what, who, how we approach this. Um, and the reason I brought up that data regarding the juvie system, and up to eighty-five percent of kids have, in those spaces, have been identified for special ed services, says to me that we are the, the way kids feel about themselves, as you said, if they feel confident, or if they feel like they belong, or they can read, or they can do these things, helps to keep them in this space versus being out in a other space and getting in trouble. And so, that, that, just to be clear, that's why I brought that up. Um, and then to just end it with, I respect what you were saying regarding the different acts of behavior that we see from, what I would argue are our canaries in these minds. And so, when I think about the kids who are self-harming, or who are, um, uh, doing things that put them in spaces where they're in counselor's offices, they too are, imagine if those were disciplined-type behaviors, because that's their ways of acting out. And if we disaggregated that along racial lines, we would see m- majority of kids who are white or other. And so, it's a shame in many ways that these behaviors are the ones that get the discipline and the kind of, and I'm not blaming you, this is our whole system, I'm a part of it, get the negative, get the punishment. Whereas the other kids, there's a, a, a feeling of, feeling sorry for them or helping in different ways. But it's all about the harm that, you know, that they inherit, that they're a part of in our society. And so, I, I wish we could think about this differently, so that we didn't have that line of punishment, if you will. But I do want, I don't think you're punishing our, how we handle it. I don't know the right word.
Like I said, uh, I was just gonna mention, oftentimes, that's how we get the connection. They're introduced to us by a behavior for the first time. You know, now we can connect. So, it's not always a bad thing that this is how we're introduced.
Um, I was gonna answer one of your other questions about, um, in terms of like suspension and like consistency. So, that is one of the great things about having two new people this year. A part of their onboarding and ongoing training, we have spent, um, a significant amount of time together making sure our work is aligned and consistent. We are, um, in, you know, great communication. Um, so, we are always, um, coming to each other about, um, having some really spirited conversations. So we are always, um, coming to each other about, um, having some really spirited conversations about incidents. So that is one thing I think that we can all be really proud of, um, which, um, I'm more confident about that this school year. So, um, from now moving forward, we're in pretty solid alignment and see consistency, in terms of behavioral consequences, especially for major incidents where, where, um, always talking and sharing.
When you're talking about an active office, active, not just with kids, with social workers, with counselors, with I E P, uh, case managers, uh, these guys are, are, you know, they, they are getting it, uh, done. And I just wanted to thank them, uh, for their work.
I can imagine the supports that you have and the resources that you have in this school. I mean, you really have to know so much about what's out there and what's available. As I was reading, and I haven't read that article in the New York Times, but I intend to, uh, find that and read that. But even the suggestions that they, that they made, you know, relationships. I know that you've been doing that. I know that you've been trying, uh, to develop not only your relationships, but connect others. As you said, uh, Mr. Moore, that you, you're trying to find what, um, relationships these kids, you can align these, these students with. Um, because you're right, those are, those are, that's, that's a key for so many, uh, students. And, um, easier said than done, right, for, for so, for so many, many students. Uh, so you've got that challenge. And also, as you said, uh, family, you know, you've got that challenge to really try to make sure, that families are supported. And sometimes what families need is outside of our school's ability to provide. And maybe if there's a way we can connect some of these families with some of those resources, it, it might, um, it might help some, um, so, yeah. Um, so Pat, I know you had questions.
Um, well, first of all, I want to thank you for being here and thank you for all the work that you do. I know you are really working hard and really trying to prevent the kind of data that we saw today. And I know you share with us such disappointment and, and, um, heartbreak. This is, you know, we have forever had, um, data that, you know, shows us that our black and brown, particularly males, um, are struggling. And, um, this is just a further proof. Um, and you raised a lot of the issues coming out of COVID. I really want to, but I really want to say two positive things that I really appreciate that you've said. One is, these kids are in trouble, not in trouble in the discipline way. Something is going on or many things are going on. And, you know, I, with young people in my life, sometimes you respond to the surface. The kid yelling at you or the kid acting out, but that's not what's going on. That's the outside, that's the eggshell. It's what's underneath. And I think you all understand that and I really appreciate that. The second thing that you said that I want to h- highlight is the notion of families. I think you brought that up, Dean Hinkle. That, um, you know, just like you don't always know, a mom and a dad or whoever doesn't know either and they're struggling and they want to help. They don't know what to do. They don't understand. And that is a huge issue. It doesn't, you know, for so many times, parents get maligned or families get maligned if the child is acting out or whatever. I will tell you that most of the time, it's not, you know, maybe there are examples, but most of the time, they are struggling as much as you are to figure it out. And maybe as much as their child is. So I, I really appreciate it you said those two things. I guess, I see, I see this, um, looking at this data as a board member and looking at all of you who work so hard, I feel like my job is to do two things. One is to push to figure out what do we do? What, what can we do outside, way outside the box to address student concerns and needs? And support you and others in the building to help the students. And secondly, because our job is to figure out how to pay for those things. And I really feel like this is a crisis that it's coming out of, um, it's coming out of COVID, but we've had it for too long already. Um, and it's worse now, but it, it's, it's been bad for a long time. And we, the predictability is, I know all of the board shares this frustration that we can't, we haven't been able to crack that predictability. So I just really encourage, really encourage you to get how, whatever, it, bring in researchers. Go do site visits, bring in people to help, you know, I, I, I had this idea as I was thinking today. But one of the things we learned from COVID was when we redeployed our safety staff to do some one-on-one with students and help track their, um, their, with their teachers, how they were doing. That was a short-term thing, but is there something longer term we can build out of that idea? You know, it feels like kids, a lot of these students, particularly those students that we were talking about and the ones who, I, I added the numbers, a hundred and eleven kids have the six or more, whatever, incidents, I'm sorry if I'm using the wrong term, uh, disciplinary incidents. And a hundred and eleven kids is a lot, but it isn't, right? So how do we develop like a belonging plan for each one of those kids that does a lot of the things you've talked about? I mean, Chris Levitino was here last month saying how they've gotten more kids into sports and activities. That's awesome. These kids need to be there. And you know this, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. But how do we support you and how do you really go outside the box to, um, to really wrap our arms around these kids? We just can't, we can't do this anymore. And I know, I, I, now I'm speaking to the choir on that, right? I'm not saying anything that you don't already know, but you need to, if we need to push you to do it, you need to push us on what you need in order to make that happen. So, yes ma'am, yes ma'am, please, help.
I'm here for help. It's really incredibly difficult. And I'm gonna preface this by saying I am a highly emotional person. I'm not going to cry, but I'm gonna speak very passionately. Um, and, uh, about how I feel. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not my colleagues. They've heard it, but I'm definitely speaking my own mind here. Um, I'm glad that you asked what to do. Um, when you all look at this screen right here, I really want you to imagine what a day in the life of one of the four of us is. We have just demonstrated a fifty percent increase in the number of incidents. And we are the same four people, a different four people, but we're four people. Our students have so many needs. It is incredibly difficult for me to sit in an incident, um, with a kid that may start off as self-harm, turn into a suicide risk assessment alongside a social worker. I don't have a mental health professional background. In the next breath, be dealing with six kids who got brought down from the bathroom, who were potentially vaping and on and on and on and on and on. Our office is a revolving door, non-stop. Most days, we do not take lunch breaks and we do not grieve that. It is just the nature of what we do. And I would really like for people to understand what it's like. It's particularly difficult to shift gears sometimes when you're dealing with a student. For me, with students who look just like me, um, imagine if you had to have a student arrested three feet away from you in your office, what that might feel like. And then to have a calendar meeting an hour later. I personally can't shift gears that quickly because I need processing time. I need to think about what just happened. I'm emotional. I want to be able to communicate with my colleagues. As we've seen, Dean Hinkle, um, her students are presenting with quite a bit of needs. So I would love to walk in her office and chit-chat about it, but she's forty-five referrals in the hole. Because we've demonstrated that the sophomores are needing incredible amount of support. Um, I really, really, um, as we continue to sit at this table, continue to present, I really want to paint a picture. Cause the data is one thing, but the stories, the stories of those thirty kids, the things that we, um, um, really went through to support and work with them and uncover all the additional things, the gaps in learning, the years that students may have been out of school. Those things for me, take a toll on me. It would be nice to have, um, some release time occasionally. If there was some situation that was so overwhelming that we needed to take a mental break, it would be nice to be able to go home for an hour or two. Yes, of course, um, I know we are provided some services through our H R department. That is great. But just understanding the working conditions, um, it's incredibly difficult. I do want to lift up the work of, um, the people in the office with us, Angie Harding and Kevin Augusta. There are no two other people in this district who, um, work in an atmosphere where there is violence present. We have students who have crawled over furniture to fight each other in our office. We have students who have crawled over other administrators to fight each other in the office and they have a front row seat to that. They are separating combatants. Um, they have a front row seat. And they aren't mental health professionals either. So I really, um, would love some support for them. I would love some, um, release time for us. I would really, really advocate for additional safety staff, um, particularly, um, that's really who's helping us, um, address unauthorized presence. Most of those referrals come from safety staff members who are engaging with students in the hallways or other areas of the building. Our lunchtimes, we are incredibly spread thin. The students are, we have four different cafeterias. We have at least three safety staff members in each cafeteria. That's twelve people off the floor. And we've got to cover the art wing, the planetarium court ward, the gym wing, the dance studio. And we need, um, support at those times. We need, um, we had a conversation earlier, Dr. Robinson said, we need a reset. A reset and some school-wide energy around helping kids get to class on time. To class on time out of the hallways, um, and to be engaged in class. So some back-to-the-basics, um, school-wide initiatives so we can all, the dean's office and the safety staff cannot attack a thousand, eleven hundred unauthorized presence alone. So those are just some things, as I said, I'm just gonna be, speak really passionately, um, about that. I just want you to imagine, um, what these conversations are. What's the conversation with a student who is under the influence? What's the conversation with a student with, um, a vape? What's the conversation with students who just got into a fight or a verbal argument or trying to de-escalate them? Or students who are fighting or in mob action fights? I really want you all to consider that and go beyond, um, just the data and the report. And really try to imagine from the moment we walk in the door at eight o'clock or six-thirty in the morning for some of us until we leave at seven o'clock at night, we're, we're problem-solving from the moment we walk in the door till, till we leave. Occasionally, students or staff are coming in there for positive things, but for the majority of what we do, it's all negativity all the time. So just, um, professional consideration for the things that we do deal with. The students are demonstrating, um, that they have needs and it's tough. I am a mother, I'm a parent, I live in this community, I'm from this community. Seeing this data of kids who look like the, the five of us, it's hard. And it's, it's data, but it's our work and it's what we're faced with every single day. So, um, thank you for asking the question. I hope, um, some of these things can be considered. It would make a world of difference, especially, um, for mental. I just, oh, one thing I didn't want, I, I didn't want to forget to say, um, especially when it comes to things like weapons. I just don't want to normalize the back-to-business and back-to-work. Some of the things that we have to deal with are just incredibly difficult. So some thought about how to support the four of us better, um, and perhaps additional support in our office. Again, we have a huge increase, fifty percent increase in activity. And four of us, um, working hard to address that. So thanks for indulging all of that. And, um, just very briefly, um, one of the things that I would like to add to what Dean Boyd has presented as well is the fact that, um, what I would like to see is an opportunity for us as deans to be more visible in the halls and in the cafeterias, to build positive relationships with students. Because I think that that can be helpful as well. A parent told me early in the, um, school year, you're like the police. Why should he come to you? That kind of hurt my feelings because I'm like, I'm not the police. I'm, I'm Dean Hinkle, you know? I, I, I want to be able to, um, sustain a positive relationship with my students. And so they're not fearful when they get that call to come downstairs. So if, if, if we're able to, um, in some way have support to the point where we're not as busy so that we're able to be in the hall, so that the teachers feel supported, so that the students feel supported, support staff feel supported. That's important. Our presence is important. But because we're so busy down in the dean's office, especially with that fifty percent increase, we are working from the time we walk in the building until the time that we leave. Some of us even long, you know, working past the hours that, you know, we would typically work throughout the school day. And so this, this is that point where, you know, we're reaching out and we're asking, we're imploring the board to in some way help us figure out the best way to actually build relationships, not just with students, but staff as well. Because, you know, that trust factor is important as the stakeholders in this community continue to try to figure out, how do we best meet the needs of these families and these kids? We can write, you know, we can write referrals to the literacy lab all day long. We can write referrals to S S T all day long. But what happens after we write those referrals and we meet with these parents and we sit in these meetings to try and problem-solve to see what's best for these students? We are creating tardy plans. We are creating, um, safety plans. We are meeting with families, following up with students, following, so our day is inundated with meeting after meeting after meeting. And sometimes it's frustrating, especially when we see these numbers and we feel as if we're not reaching the population of students that we need to reach. And so, I'm, I, I said all of that to just say, because I'm on my soapbox right now. I'm saying that to say that, you know, we are really trying to figure out how to best support our students holistically. Not just in a disciplinary sense, but that, that, that S E L piece, it becomes important as well. We are sitting down, we're meeting with students, we're not just me, sitting down and going, here, here is the, um, infraction. Here's what was written. Here's your consequence. That's not what we're doing. We're sitting down and we're providing a safe space for students to be open and be able to say, well, this is why I did what I did. Now how do you help me? And we want to be able to do that. So any support that you all can provide to us, we would greatly appreciate.
So Ms. Hinkle, I, I know you to be all that. I know that, um, having taught my son, uh, and he said you are all that. You are every little bit of the passion and energy you just displayed, um, for our kids. You did that every day, especially for my son. Um, so, thank you. This is, so thank you all, because this is hard work. The first thing I thought about, um, before you came to the table was what kind of support do they get in processing this data? And, um, Ms. Boyd, you mentioned, you know, I'm not a mental health expert, but we're asking you to be. And, and this is hard. It is hard to just leave this, after the bell rings. I know you don't do that. For all the reasons you just said, and I, I, I don't want to rehash that. But I will say that there was some of that passion last year, Ms. Boyd, came out of you when we started talking about the solutions. And Pat asked the same question. For as long as she's been on the board, she asks the same question, like, you know, what can we do, right? She always asks that question. And so I'm, I'm gonna say loud and clear, you don't want us to determine what you should do. You know, like what kind of help you need, but I will say- But I will say that the leaders need to determine how to build in resources to support you to do your work, because our kids are dropping through the crack. And bring that back and present that to us, because it's beyond urgent, not just for their well-being, for the community's well-being, for the family's well-being, but for your well-being. You cannot continue to do this work and think that it's not going to impact you, you know, every day. You can't turn this off. I don't know what the answers are. I think I said that last year. I am just as stumped, and I've been in youth development and juvenile justice and criminal justice back around all my life, and I don't know what the response is. And that bothers me to my core. And it's definitely not in these four walls only. So if we continue to think that from the time they enter until the time they leave that we're gonna solve and address all the issues you've just laid out, we're setting ourselves up to fail, our children will fail, because we need help. We can't do this alone. So my expectation is that last slide where you outlined Dr. Robinson, some of the four, yeah. You gotta fill that in. Like what does that mean? What does it look like? Maybe what does it cost? You know, all the details, it has to be filled in. But there was an indication last year that we were seeing this trend, and we were talking about the freshmen that we had yet to see. We were talking about the group that experienced, you know, remote learning. So the only, and I, you know, I try so hard to keep my mouth closed, right? Because I know this work is hard, and I'm not here to layer on. I'm like, I equal your passion, that's all. So when you, when I talk like this, I'm not mad, I'm passionate. So other folks don't get it twisted. I'm just passionate, right? My expectation is that we don't keep having the conversation, because we know the data is going to, right? Because we, there are just too many circumstances going on in the world right now and in our community right now. We can sort of trend what's going to happen next year with our freshmen. And, you know, and I wanna be hopeful, but you have some information, some indicators now. We're partnering across districts, so we know, we know what's happening. So what are we, how are we preparing ourselves for that, for what we have now, but what's to come? And that is my concern, that we have to start reporting on, we tried this, it didn't do what we thought it was gonna do, so we moved, you know, we moved to this. Or we've been trying this, or Northwestern has said this to us, and so we made some changes. And we're at the point now where we just got, we have to go. We gotta go. And so, you know, to our leaders, fill it in. Tell us what the plan is, you know, and bring it back. But you know more about what you need than we do. And we're only going to support what's needed, because you painted the picture extremely well. Right? And the data did help. Because, you know, that's how we justify a lot of things. So, but you painted the picture really well. Tell us what you need, so we can support what's trying to happen, what you're trying to do, so, you know, so that we can support our students and we can, most importantly, support the work that you're trying to do. And last year, there were two different individuals? Yeah, we don't need a revolving door, because nobody's built for this without support. Like this is, this is not that kind of work. You gotta pour back in and figure out how to support staff that's doing this. And I'm not saying that you're not, but I'm just hearing what you're saying, and I'm looking at the data. And before we all break, let's figure out how we can provide that support or what that support looks like.
I just, I'm sorry, Marcus, I just wanna really quickly circle back, because I think what Monique said really was a lot of what I was thinking too. But it's not just the four or five of you. We, I don't in any way expect you to just take all this on by yourselves. And that's what I meant by help. Like, yes, we need to help you in your roles to support you in your jobs. That's one thing. But in terms of supporting the kids, that's much more than you. And I don't know who that is in the building or who it is in the community, but if that takes us supporting that through dollars or whatever, contracts, whatever, I think that's another piece of this. It's supporting you individually, but recognizing this, there are a lot, even if it's only thirty kids, that's too much for four people to do. Because we understand the depth of any one of those kids' stories could be so much work and involve the mental health professionals and involve academic support and involve family support and many other things, right? So I wanna be really clear, this is in no way a job that I think that you all have to do by yourselves. I mean, yes, you have certain jobs and you do those. But, I mean, in terms of really figuring out what our kids need and how we address that, that's much bigger than the five of you. And I think that's why I meant it's our job to support bigger plans. You have to help us by, as Monique said, coming to us, and it's not just you coming to us, but social workers and counselors and other people in the building to say, here's the plan, we think, this is what we wanna try. Great, but not put it all on your shoulders. You, you know, I completely understand how challenging your jobs are, and I don't mean in any way to say this is just all you. You take care of it, because it's not. It's, this is a school-wide issue that requires school-wide support and then some, even outside the school.
So I'm glad you said that, Pat, because I've been wanting to say that for a while. The response to what we're seeing in this data will be and is a systemic response, right? It bears ed services, student services, CNI, every aspect of what and how we do school. And, you know, there is new research that is emerging that we happen to, because we really do keep our eye on what folks are doing, what the researchers are doing, especially on social-emotional learning and, you know, people who are social psychologists, that we are going to be engaging and training our staff on and having in conversation, both on the instructional side and the non-instructional side of the house. But to what you just said, Monique, about last year's data. So we, based on last year's data, we made adjustments for this year, but the need continues to outpace our planning, right? You know, we put the pieces in place, and then we see still a high volume of need. So we're trying to figure out as a system, how do we, how do we plan for that kind of response? And how do we remain adaptable as a leadership culture to when those needs emerge as they do? Especially on the financial pieces. But yeah, this is gonna be definitely a systemic response that stems from the classroom, hallway, safety, you name it. And I know that Pete has a couple of things that I have asked him to share about this, and so does Ty. So Pete, can you share a little bit of work on, I mean, there's a whole brand-new research on just interventions that's gonna be coming out and published in the fall. And we have established a residency with one of the leading experts to come in and train our staff on, how do we even begin to put our heads around this? Go ahead, Pete.
All right, so we're bringing David Jaeger from University of Texas, Austin. He used to work in, at Stanford in, with our growth mindset. And now he does two things. One is he did Stress Can Be Productive mindset. He did a lot of research recasting stress, as opposed to stress being toxic. How can stress be enhancing? And actually had amazing results with not just students, but adults with this intervention. And it's a, we've also partnered with Chris Rozak at Washington. And he's come here and he's worked with our PE department and he's worked with our advanced placement students on toxic stress and recasting it, right? And this is groundbreaking. David Jaeger's research published in Journal of Science, which is incredible. It's one of the most prestigious journals. But he also does work on mentoring. Because, and he talks about how neuroscientists have discovered that around the age of ten, puberty spurs the brain to create socially rewarding experiences such as pride, admiration, and respect. And I heard a lot of that conversation tonight amongst what our students want. And that students also become highly averse to social pain, such as humiliation and shame. But he takes it a step further in his research. And he's uncovered that students subtly read between the lines of everything we say as adults or peers through that lens. And they interpret the hidden implications of our words and their peers' words to find out if they're being disrespected or if they're being honored. Now, he's done a lot of research. He's done it in schools and different spaces. And he actually has what he calls a productive mentor mindset and a mentoring approach for both adults, teachers, the dean. A lot of what I heard tonight is what he does. But actually, we're gonna train our staff on that with him. He's coming here, he's doing a residency here, which is not just a one-off all-staff, but he's gonna meet with different groups in the building and we're actually-
And sit with them for hours.
For hours, and we have long-term plans. We're working with him on a long-term plan on how do we scale that mentoring aspect? And it's not mentoring as in like, I'm gonna mentor you. It's mentoring as in like, how do we mentor all of the students in our classroom? And how do we become intentional around that language we use when we're cued to know how the adolescent brain responds to that? It's also interesting that it's not just the adolescent brain. His book is called Ten to Twenty Two, Ten to Twenty Five. And he says these approaches also work with adults in the workforce. So he's replicated it both in schools and in the workforce. And it works for all students to support growth, learning, and development of young people. And the goal, of course, is to have a more fair and equitable society. And he has, these are research-based practices that have come out of both Stanford and University of Texas and have scaled. He's scaling the mentor work in the state of Texas right now. We're gonna go down, a group of us, and go see that. And then he's gonna come here and work with our folks. We're very, very excited about that.
Yeah, and because what we know is the past, I wanna call them mental models, the past models we have are not sufficient enough to just a post-pandemic adolescent teen. They're just not adequate. And so we're having to reach for more research. And the book that Pete's referring to, half of the book is David's narrative, but the other half is all interventions that we can use. And Dr. Kenzie had a little bit to add too about.
Yeah, and as, when we're thinking about all of these new components, you know, we were talking about the filling in. And I know, I just wanna say out loud, y'all are doing way more than even all of those things, right? You listed some of them. There's so many steps that you all take every day, and really, we appreciate what you're doing. Because I have to say, one of the other pieces, this is not what Dr. Campbell asked me to do, but I have to say it, is not only do students, have students developed that fabulous relationship with you, but I hear it from parents, from the parents who have gratitude for being treated with that same respect that the research shows not just adolescents want, but we want as adults. In terms of developing those relationships, our goal for, right? Community and pulling our parents in closer, and you all are doing that every day. And doing it also with the structure. And that was a little bit about what I was gonna add, is what we know is the relationships are critical. All of these pieces are critical, and we do that within the context of structure as well. And that's part of how we show care, and that's one of the things we're looking at as we zoom out and we think about, okay, what does our space look like? We did a lot of grace when we came back from COVID. And we're gonna continue to support everyone in thinking about what the research shows about that demonstration of care, the continuity of the building of relationships within the context of structure and demonstrating respect and pulling us back into a classroom environment where there is that fight or flight, just like you spoke to. So us really understanding, and I know Nicole, I don't wanna steal your thunder here, but we were, you know, just kind of noting, what we know is mental health is showing up as externalizing and internalizing. And Mary, you spoke to that a little bit. And so we need to make sure that we're attending to all of those levels of needs, and that's how we're gonna continue, even on our academic. We have an SEL academic integrationist coach now, because we wanna think about all of the varied ways that we're doing that. Thank you, and thank you for all of your work. It's worth it.
Thank you. Liz, you have a question?
Yeah. Thank you so much for all of your feedback so far. I'm hearing and feeling everything you're saying, and I've learned a lot tonight, so thank you so much for that. For me personally, the thing that I always find the most concerning is the out-of-school suspensions, because they can be so detrimental to the students. And when we're talking about relationship building and well-being and academic success and even extracurriculars, being out of school is gonna affect all of those things. And we know that our students need those things to succeed. And so seeing the numbers for OSS, for me personally, is always much more discouraging than the ISS, where they're actually receiving instruction. I just wanted to ask, do you have ideas or feedback on how, and I realize you're dealing with egregious actions and dangerous incidents that are occurring, but how we can shift away from OSS to ISS? Or just in general, reduce our numbers of OSS?
Yeah, I'll just speak real quick. For the most part, kids are out of school because of a safety concern. And that's either to themselves or others. And if a student is suspended out of school for an extended period of time, we do provide home-bound instruction, so they don't just unplug from their academics.
I was gonna say the same thing. In some cases, there is a need. Specifically, if a student is fighting someone and you end up causing them to go to the hospital. I was just trying to paint a clearer picture. If you have threatened to harm someone and then you're in possession of a knife, we don't want you back in the building the next day. So there are, again, egregious safety concerns. There are reasons why it's necessary to be away from, could be the person you were in a fight with. If you attacked a person, we wouldn't want to put you back in the same space immediately. So I think we have done, this particular school year, the greatest deal of reducing consequences with having a reduction in suspension days if a student participated. And like our student empowerment program, where they're working on decision-making or things that are specific to the infraction that was caused. So we have been really intentional about that, again, in alignment with that. But in some circumstances, I would still say it's critically necessary if a student, like Dr. Robinson said, is being a danger to themselves or someone else.
I would even add, in most of those cases, we reduce their suspensions if they attend an intervention program where they can learn strategies of how to navigate, regulate themselves in the future. So even those out-of-school suspensions, it doesn't come with, without services, education, strategies, and intervention.
And what would you say is the average length of time of an out-of-school suspension? I mean, I have no idea what kind of days we're looking at, or weeks.
Right. I'd have to go back and look at the data.
The good thing that we've been able to do is look at every situation individually. We don't have the blanket. If you get into a fight, you automatically, the old model, you got ten days automatically. Every situation is individualized. And we may have situations where we've brought in students back the next day. With the support, we've, you know, if there's a physical altercation, we have to set up with Mr. King, our restorative justice coordinator, so he can go ahead and make sure as they walk back in the building, they're gonna have a mediation, and they can get those situations worked out so we can get them back into the building as soon-
as they walk back in the building, they're going to have a mediation, and they can get those situations worked out so we can get them back into the building as soon as possible. But we look at every situation, you know, individualized, instead of just giving, oh, you did this, or this is blanket, what you're going to get. Every situation is different. It can't have a situation where two students are involved in altercation. If you attack someone and someone is literally trying to get you off of them, you, that student's going to, you know, the one who was attacked or harmed may not receive, you know, sort of an out-of-school or anything like that, but we have, we investigate every situation.
What you don't want is another suspension from the beginning because it wasn't handled with care.
Thank you.
I was going to offer that I think you all do a great job also of making sure to connect students, making sure if you have, they have an IEP, they get their related services in addition to the instructional component, whether that's social work or other related services, and you do a great job of connecting folks to community resources, even during that time when they're in out-of-school suspension, so thank you.
Just, just to add to that, thank you, Dr. Kinsey. It's, these suspensions, there's, there's a lot of steps, and there's a lengthy procedure in getting all these things in place. I mean, you're hearing about the communication with case managers, the communications with counselors, with teachers amongst each other. You know, we're often discussing, because sometimes the incidences are involving a junior and a senior, a sophomore and a freshman, so it's grade level. And in some cases, some of our larger incidences, and we see here mob action. I mean, we're talking about more than two individuals involved in something. I know that some of those situations are upwards of ten, twelve people. So there's, there's a lot of steps involved in that. Having those type of meetings, depending if we're reaching the number of days for MDRs, there's preparation that goes into that. Re-entry meetings, mediations. These are, and these are also, obviously, our conversations with the students, the statements from the students, the conversations with parents, right? Is it something that we're concerned about that may affect outside of school? Are we involving our SROs and our reports, you know, are our reports being filed by families saying that, you know, these individuals were threatening their student or their child or their family, right? So there's, there's quite a lengthy list of, of, of things we have to check off before we can say, okay, this is what we're going to do. And ultimately, a lot of these incidences, we're talking about a danger to the building, right? We're talking about not just the two or four or six people that were involved in some of these incidences. We're talking about individuals that can be impacting five thousand people that we have in this building.
Yeah, it's not just student to student. I mean, they could be very complicated cases. So we're not just kicking kids out.
And then add in social media to the mix. And, you know, ongoing, the continuation of something that may have started in school or out of school even. So that can exacerbate a situation and, you know, make it not safe for students to be together. As you mentioned, like mob action, and once things hit, social media, and people chime in, threats are made, all kinds of things. So it just depends on the situation.
Thank you. So first, I wanted to say, I mean, obviously, I've been in a different role, and I worked in the building for a long time. And I want to say that I really appreciate your efforts and the school's efforts. I think we're really serious about developing additional and varied interventions in ways of supporting students and looking at them as individuals. And you got, you all have said a lot about that, just in terms of even just now in this answer about, you know, every suspension is different. I also really want to recognize all the passion, the work, the lack of time you have in your role. And that brings me to my own, one thing that jumped out at me, and it is informed from my own experience, is, okay, things happen, and we do have our students who are suspended, and particularly if they're suspended more than once. The reality is, if you're not in the classroom, it's not the same learning experience. And that, one of those slides talked about the students who, they're behind, so then they just figure, why should I go to school? Because I, how do I ever catch up? And that is so discouraging. I mean, that's been my experience. And I'm wondering, from your perspective as deans, and I know you don't speak for everybody in all their roles, but what are your hopes for how we can, what we can do once we're trying to reintegrate those students and what you need and what you hope for, and the time to collaborate with other people? And, you know, that's a very individual thing, and I think it's, it's, it's human nature for kids to just kind of feel like, what's, what's the point? I'm so behind. I'm not connected. How am I ever going to be connected?
I'll just start with, you have to handle with care. We have to humanize our children. They come to us very complicated in some cases, especially when they return. You know, it's, it's so much. We usually get a team of folks together. Who does this kid connect with? Is it a coach? Is it a case manager? How many people? How few people? So the supports can look differently depending on the student and what we know about the student. But the effort and goal is to reintegrate them, to make them feel like they are connected. And there's a lot of follow-up. It's not, you're back, see you in the hallways, when I see you, when I see you. There's a lot of follow-up and, and direct and indirect contact. I can't tell how many kids out. I wonder how he's doing. Let me check his attendance. Let me check his grades. Let me check and see if there, anything's going on. Let me grab him out of the hallway and just check in on him to see how they're, they're doing. That happens with probably every administrator I know. They go above and beyond, especially these guys. You know, I always say, you're not a, you're not a dean, you're a behavior specialist, you're an interventionist. That's the work that they're doing.
So once again, thank you for coming and speaking and sharing honestly. Thank you for speaking with all that passion. I hope that you leave here feeling like you are not only supported by this board, because we care about your well-being, and we care about the well-being of our students and their families, but we also care about your well-being, because we don't want to see the revolving door. We want you to be sustained in, in your positions, because you are, you, you, you work hard and you're committed to, to seeing our students thrive and do better. We recognize too that this goal number two right now has to be a priority for us. You've heard the superintendent and the assistant superintendent speak about plans for the future. We also want to hear from you. What do you, what do you think? What are, what are, what are, what would you come up with? If we asked you what you need, what would be your dreams? I want to know what, what your dreams would be, how we could hear from you if you were to think out of the box and say, this is what we need. Or Dr. Jaeger coming in, what can, what can Dr. Jaeger do specifically for you to help you? That's what we, that's what we want to hear. So, so thank you, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for those long, long, long hours. Because I know they're long, and I know even when you leave, they stay with you and interrupt your time with your family, your own families, and your sleep and your rest. And then you come up, you come the very next day and, and start again. I'd love to see you have time to be a part of the activities in the hall as well. Get to know the, the students, that they get to know you in a different way, that students just know you just because you, you work with sophomores, you work with freshmen, so you know the class, you know the students, those that are in your office as well as those that are not. But it doesn't sound like right now you have the time for that. So just, so let us know what you, what you need. And thank you again for, for coming and staying late.
Again.
Again. Right, right. All right. Okay, so. Breathe, everybody. Take a deep breath. All right. So we're going to move through the rest of our agenda. We are at item number seven, FOIA's. We have three. Dr. Beavis, do you have anything special to tell us about them?
Sure. We have one from Mahalich, one from Hubbard, and one from Mendez. The responses and attachments are in your packet.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any board committee reports this month? Okay, don't have any of those, so Nicole, you're on.
All right. Hello, everyone. This is, this is the penultimate, or I guess this is the ultimate report, the last one. But I just want to say happy April, the weather today, you know, shine some light. Oh, and the eclipse, that was pretty cool. And it just kind of is reminding us that spring is coming and the school year's coming to an end. We're excited to wrap things up. After a well-deserved spring break a couple of weeks ago, we're coming back strong and ready to finish off the school year with lots of motivation. Freshmen, sophomores, and juniors came back last week to the SAT and PSAT. Seniors got a couple extra days off, so that was nice. Upcoming events include the abilities conference, which I believe is tomorrow, and then the Meta Summit, which is April twenty-fourth. And they're both part of the social consciousness series. And then within that series, there's, there are students in Emerge, which is a leadership program here at ETHS, and then also the Student Union, who are collaborating with people in the Equity Office to kickstart a student solidarity series. In this series, it's going to be like circle discussions, where students will have an ax, will have access to a space where they hopefully can find support among their peers or classmates that share similar identities or interests or experiences. So this kind of connects to what we were just talking about in that long report about finding, finding spaces for those kids who seem to be falling through the cracks. I think it's definitely important to acknowledge how, like, peers can support peers also. I understand that, obviously, they're going through a lot in that office. They're working hard, and students are also working hard, but I think there's a sense of responsibility that we have to our school to help our peers and to aid them and support them in any way we can. But back to the discussion circles, these, the goal is just basically to approach discipline, conflict, and community building through a more restorative lens, which they were talking about earlier too. So a little foreshadowing, I guess. Lastly, the new student rep elections are happening right now, so we see some campaigning happening. There are, I think, nine or ten candidates, so that's really exciting. Even just with, like, within a couple years, between, I guess, me and then the, my potential replacements. I just, it's just been great to see how, like, the generation has become such great changemakers, and people are really, they're advocating for things they want to see, and it's really exciting to know that our school's in the hands of people who care. And yeah, that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Nicole. Dr. Campbell.
All right. It's late, so I'm going to try to be as thorough and as brief as possible. Just to share one that, one idea or one pretty good thing is that we've received a grant from the French Heritage Language Program. It's a thirty thousand dollar grant. And the grant helps to, the program helps to aim high school students who have recently immigrated to the United States. And the ETHS, we used to, used the grant to, in the development and after-school design programs for French-speaking students, including newcomers and other students with Francophone roots and preserving their linguistic and cultural heritage. This funding will also support ETHS's new French Heritage Language course that will be offered this fall, which will facilitate advanced language proficiency and allow students to connect with and explore their cultural heritage. In relation to the conversation we just had, I'd like to share that I was with the National Alliance of Black School Educators and the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. There was a partnership with both of those organizations for black and Latino superintendents to march on the hill to really advocate for federal dollars, the conversation that we were having tonight. They were all black and Latino superintendents, and we were meeting with members of Congress to, to advocate for equitable access to technology and pushing for comprehensive mental health support for schools, because we're not the only ones facing the issue, because we want, also want to have safe learning spaces that are free from violence and discrimination. It was a very powerful time to be able to speak with most of our, with many congressional representatives on, on the Senate side and on the, you know, US House side, because these issues are very important, they're very dire, and many, many schools unfortunately don't have the resources that we have to be able to meet some of those demands financially. And we all need more help. And I know that there is some talk in DC around having, you know, mental health clinics available to students during the school day for diagnoses and prescriptions and all of those things, especially for kids who, and families that don't have insurance. So there's, you know, if the schools are the center and are the nexus of the community, the, as you mentioned, Monique, the partnerships that are going to be necessary to really help our students and help our staff support our students are absolutely critical. And I've had this conversation with many folks in the mental health profession on how they can provide services for schools during school. And I know that's not ideal, as some of them may say, but we have to figure something out, because it's, the need goes beyond our training and what we can provide during the day. So that's a little bit of that. And lastly, we had special events. We had our Latinx Summit. We've held Holocaust Remembrance Week. The Illinois DECA 2024 Career Development Conference also happened. We hosted WoW for ETHS, and of course, you know, we were all, you know, excited to see, well, most folks saw, Lance play tonight in the championship in NCAA. I don't know if they, they lost. So, but that's my report, and I just really appreciate the board's engagement tonight and your perspective, as well as the deans. And I was sitting here moving around the compass, and I, we are a very special district to be able to have that conversation in the way that we did. It doesn't happen like that in other districts. And to be as student-centered as we are, it brings me a lot of hope for what I believe that we can do. So it won't happen overnight, but all of us being as committed the way that we are, I have a lot of hope. So thank you all for tonight's conversation.
That's awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Thank you. All right.
Do we have more?
We do. We have items for action. Okay, don't worry, Monique. Just when I nut you.
That was the perfect note.
All right, let's go. The first item, action item, is approval of resolution authorizing notice of dismissal to final year probationary teacher. Can I have a motion for approval, please?
So move second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. The next item is approval of resolution granting tenure appointments.
So moved.
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item. Resolution authorizing and provising for an installment purchase agreement. And for the issue not to exceed five million seventy-five thousand dollars. General obligation debt certificates, which is limited tax, series of twenty twenty-four. For the purpose of improving sites and altering, repairing and equipping. School buildings and facilities and authorizing the sale of said certificates to the purchaser thereof.
So moved. As long as you write it simpler. Second.
Roll call, please.
Carson.
Yes.
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 Angie.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Um, the next item is approval of textbook adoption and deleting, deletion proposals.
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. The next item is approval of twenty twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school calendars.
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. The next item is the consent agenda, which, uh, which includes approval of twenty twenty-four. Roof replacement work, approval of minutes from February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four regular meeting and closed session. Release for public information minutes of closed sessions from July twenty twenty-three to December twenty-three. And the destruction of closed session tapes, approval of bills, treasures reports from January twenty twenty-four. And personnel report.
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. The next item is old and new business. Do we have any old and new business? I would like to say in, uh, closing that I too appreciate this board. I appreciate that conversation that we had. I agree with Marcus. It's not an easy conversation, but I just really appreciate how candid everybody was. And the support that we, um, gave as well as, um, recognizing how serious this is. So thank you all. Really appreciate how prepared you were. It was just awesome to be a part. It is really awesome to be a part of this board. We're not afraid of the hard work and it is hard work. So with that, can I have a motion for adjourn, oh, Gretchen's not here.
Who's gonna do it? We're lost.
Can I have a motion for adjournment?
Sitting closest to where she sits.
Gretchen would just say, can we go now?
Just call this move that we adjourn.
Anybody?
Yeah, let's do it.
Move that we adjourn.
Okay, alright. This meeting is adjourned at ten fifty-five.
I would be in the dean's office. I have.